Call the Hazel Park Board of Education meeting to order at 6:00 PM on this February 25th, 2025. Welcome, everybody, on this beautiful night and it's lovely. I love to see the kids back. So we need to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Uh, point, roll call please.
Oh, roll call. I'm sorry. I need to read my list. But standard you, roll call. Beaton?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Fortress?
Present.
Fox?
Here.
Lepron Boys?
Here.
Rete?
Here.
Pinton?
Here.
Now the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the name of the God.
Okay, our first order of business. Let's do it in the month.
We have to approve the agenda.
Prove the agenda.
Oh my God.
We got this. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Support.
Okay, motion to approve the agenda by Heidi, support by Debbie. All in favor of approving the agenda?
Can we get discussion for the agenda, please?
Would you like what?
Discussion for the agenda.
Sure.
If we can get some clarification, we had a memo at committee of the whole for a language line pilot that was being voted on today. Can we get clarification on why that's not included?
Have to pause. We have temporarily removed it from the agenda until we have a better feel for some of the financial implications.
Do we know when it will be put back on? Do we have an estimate?
I do not have an estimate.
Okay. I will. It worries me that it's not included. I mean, our original, the original memo that was given to us at committee of the whole that we talked about so that we could vote, not only was it a relatively small amount of money speaking, but it was directly related to an MDE review and Title III compliance. And it worries me with the number of audits and the number of things that we have going on that we are sacrificing a $6,000 initiative that would not only provide some really inclusive services to our families, but was directly recommended through an MDE review and may further push us out of compliance with yet another issue.
So I want to clarify that it will not push us out of compliance and it was not specifically addressed in the MDE review, but it will address some shortcomings we know that we have. So it's not a no. I think it's just a not yet.
Okay. That's a shame, given the amount of money that we've spent in the past month. That something that would directly service our families that are not English-speaking and that would allow the district to be more inclusive for them is what we're sacrificing. But we can vote on the agenda.
Any other discussion? Let's do roll call, please. Fortress?
Yes.
Lepron Boys?
Yes.
Beaton?
No.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Rete?
No.
Pinton?
Yes.
Motion carries. To accept the agenda. Now we're on to special order business, student of the month.
Are we going in front? Pardon me? Are we lighting up?
Yes, I think we should absolutely do that.
Mike, no paths. I know. I was just thinking, I've got to go all the way out. But walkways are closed.
We're going to start with Edison. So the representative for Edison, speech. Anybody from Edison to give out, to read out the speech?
We can. Nope, we can. I'll go to Hoover. We want you to read it. Yep. Yeah. But I'm in, oh, we can do Webb first. Go on.
All right. For Webb, our student of the month, Leah Guignot. Monsieur Hart's class-nominated Leah Guignot is our February student of the month. Leah is such a joy to have in our classroom community. Her classmates describe her as kind, creative, and a great friend. Her teachers describe her as amazing, humble, helpful, and hardworking. Leah has over 1,000 reading stops. With her positive attitude and responsible behavior, Leah is headed for greatness. Great job, Leah. All right. Hoover's elementary student of the month is Isabel Han. She is in Mr. Lemire's room. And this month, we're excited to celebrate Isabel as our student of the month. Isabel embodies kindness, respect, and responsibility every day. Her peers describe her as someone who is always on task, practices safety, and shows respect to teachers and classmates alike. She is always willing to help, never argues, and consistently sets an example of what it means to be a leader. What makes Isabel truly special is her authenticity, uniqueness, and her unwavering integrity. Her commitment to doing what is right, even when no one is watching, is inspiring. She brings positivity and warmth to our classroom, making it a better place for everyone. We are so fortunate to have Isabel in our class, and we can't wait to see all the amazing things she will continue to achieve. Wonderful. All right. I have with me.
Turn for the crowd, my dear.
This is Mr. Carter. And I have had the pleasure of watching Carter grow into the amazing young man that he is today. And we love, we love the family. Girls, I see you back there, too. Carter is a wonderful student. He takes pride in his work and always puts best, I'm sorry, puts forth his best effort in class. Carter is kind and helpful to everyone. He sets a wonderful example for others. I know that if I need something done properly, carefully, or thoughtfully, Carter is the student I look to for help. He is consistent and kind. Carter, for all you do, keep up the good work. We're proud of you.
Good evening, everyone. We have Charlie Robinson from Advantage High School. It is an honor to have Charlie Robinson as student of the month. She has made a complete turnaround since last school year. Mr. Higginbotham and Mrs. Bellego stated that Charlie is a pleasure to have in class, always. She has a great attitude, and she is an excellent student with great behavior. She goes above and beyond what is required of her in class, and she asks high-level questions. Keep up the good work, Charlie.
This is Graham Becker from the Junior High. Hazel Park Junior High is proud to recognize Graham Becker as our January student of the month. His dedication to being responsible, safe, respectful, and kind, his dedication to being respectful, responsible, safe, and kind sets a shining example for those around him. He constantly puts great effort into all of his classes, achieves excellent grades, and serves as a role model to his peers. He is also appreciated for his willingness to help others and make everyone feel included. His friendly and outgoing nature makes him well-liked by both staff and students, and his positive, positive attitude truly embodies what it means to be a Hazel Park Junior High student. We thank Graham for being such an outstanding part of our school community. Keep up the fantastic work.
Well, Mr. Kemp, Jeremiah Kemp is our student of the month at Hazel Park High School. His mother is with us. He is actually at drama on his way, hopefully, in the next few minutes because he's also our high school representative who's supposed to be speaking in a moment about things going on at the high school. So they have production coming up pretty soon. So I know he's very committed to that. Mr. Fairbrother, who is the drama teacher, recommended that Jeremiah be nominated as student of the month. He says he embodies the finest traits of people-first leadership, collaboratively setting goals, freely sharing genuine smiles, and selflessly coaching his peers towards success. What Mr. Fairbrother said he is most impressed about is his tireless commitment to growth in his organizations, in himself, and in others. He fearlessly asks critical questions, learns speedily from every mistake, and proceeds with deepened professionalism. Hazel Park has been lucky to have this superstar move through its hallways and onto its stages, strengthening drama, the National Honor Society, and our greater community in the process. Mr. Lee, the band teacher, stated that Jeremiah was an outstanding soloist and musician during our marching band season. He was a leader and always exhibited the qualities that we look for in the senior member of his section. He is well-respected among his peers and our staff. And our administrative team wanted everyone to know what a true leader Jeremiah truly is. He's extremely organized, dedicated, responsible, even more than me at times. He reminded me today that we needed to meet to discuss tonight because he already had his list ready to go. So he's very organized, and I adore. He's been two years, for those of you who watch board meetings, for the last two years, you've seen Jeremiah here. And he's always well-spoken, organized, which I truly appreciate. I am confident, as all the administrators and teaching staff at Hazel Park High School, that he is going to succeed no matter what he puts his mind to. So, Mom, kudos to you. So I know Dar Don's principal cannot be here. So we have Zachary McMorris. Zachary has done. Zachary has done a great job transitioning into new classroom learning opportunities. He is showing courage and leadership as he navigates through his day. Keep up the good work, Zachary. We are so proud of you. Do we have anyone here from Invest? Okay. So we have Nora from Invest. Nora is a shining example of dedication, leadership, and resilience. A proud immigrant from Baghdad, Nora has embraced every opportunity to make a lasting impact on her community. As a student council member at Invest, she has been instrumental in leading anti-bullying initiatives, organizing fundraisers, and strengthening the school's culture of inclusivity and excellence. Her hard work and ambition have paid off. Nora was accepted into all three universities she applied to, and will be attending Michigan State University to study political science. With aspirations of becoming a political analyst, she is determined to use her voice and expertise to shape the future. Beyond academics and leadership, Nora is an incredible daughter and a devoted sister, always uplifting and supporting her family. Her passion, kindness, and drive set her apart, making her a true model for her peers. Congratulations, Nora. Your future is bright, and we can't wait to see all you accomplish. Do we have anyone here from Edison? No? Okay. I'll read it anyways. C. John has made great progress at Edison. He has committed to following the behavior expectations of the building, advocating for himself in an appropriate manner and utilizing the resources available to him. He has shown that he is engaged with academics and focused on returning to his home school. The progress he has made during his time at Edison has been phenomenal, and the staff is so proud of his accomplishments as he continues to grow and progress. Congratulations.
So we can have another round of applause for all the wonderful, successful students. You may stay, or you may choose to leave. It's up to you. We welcome you to stay. The next on the agenda is the Junior High Representative Report. Do we have a Junior High Representative?
Actually, not yet. She let me know this afternoon that she would have been able to attend today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My school is late. Advantage Representative?
Our high school wants us to play.
We're up to Teacher of the Year. That's perfect. Okay, we're up to Teacher of the Year. So, Board of Education members, I would like to read off the list of honorable mentions for Teacher of the Year, because we have so many talented staff members, and it's important to know that so many people think so highly of them. So, from Webster, Carley O'Bright was an honorable mention. From Hoover, Carrie Johnson, Elizabeth Dean, Jennifer Williams, they were honorable mentions. United Oaks, we have Amber Wilson and Kim Forster. Congratulations. From Webb Elementary, Angela Wilkins, Beth Pollack, Emily Schneider, Jennifer Hall, Julia Burgess, and Emily Schneider, again. She must have gotten many nominations. At the Junior High, Audrey London. At the high school, Karen Ryan, Jardon, Janet Springsteen, Karen Converse, and Melissa Comeret Brown. All honorable mentions. From Edison, Tanya Wilson. And from Invest, Mia Shamas. Congratulations to all of those teachers. Are any of those teachers here today?
Yeah.
Yeah, please stand if you run the list. Hazel Park's very fortunate, always has been very fortunate, to have very dedicated teachers committed to your students, to your children. So, can, can we start, because I believe we have principals? Are we coming back up? Yes, please. We have principals who would like to honor the Teachers of the Year from each grade level. This is exciting. Do you want to...
Sure. Okay. Good evening. I'm here tonight to honor Tracy Steen from Webster Early Childhood Center. Tracy is a dedicated and compassionate teacher with over 20 years of experience. She consistently shows patience, kindness, and love towards her students, creating a welcoming and supportive environment where everyone feels valued. Tracy is always prepared with engaging activities and readily steps in to help her colleagues and students. She has developed strong relationships with students and their families, making them feel at home at school. Tracy is also a mentor to both new and experienced teachers, and actively participates in family and after-school events, demonstrating her commitment to the entire school community. Her dedication to her students, particularly those with special needs, stands out. One parent shared that Tracy treated their child as her own, providing immense support and understanding for their child with autism. Her patience and ability to help students adjust to the school environment has earned her high praise from parents and coworkers alike. Tracy's passion for teaching, her willingness to go above and beyond, and the positive impact that she has had on everyone around her makes her an exceptional educator deserving of this recognition. Congratulations for being the first preschool honoree at Hazel Park.
I would like to honor our elementary Teacher of the Year, Sue Watts from Webb Elementary. Sue has worked for the district since 1993, by my calculations, 32 years. She's set up shop at many of our schools, including Longfellow, Clark, Hoover, United Oaks, and most recently Webb, and I have personally known her to teach kindergarten first, second, fifth, and young fives. Nominators have included wonderful things about her. Mrs. Watts is a dedicated educator who goes above and beyond to support her students' academic and emotional growth. She uses adaptive teaching methods and hands-on support to create an engaging, inclusive classroom where every student feels valued. Her patience and empathetic approach foster a positive environment that encourages students to succeed, while her emphasis on social-emotional learning and school readiness helps students develop essential skills like conflict resolution, peer collaboration, and classroom routines. By tailoring lessons to meet each student's needs, she ensures that all students thrive at their own pace, while also fostering teamwork and leadership within the classroom. Beyond her work in the classroom, Mrs. Watts builds strong relationships with students, parents, and the broader school community. She communicates openly with parents, offering guidance and support, and actively participates in school events and extracurricular activities. Her students, well-prepared for kindergarten, often serve as role models and mentors, helping to organize school-wide events like the holiday concert. Mrs. Watts's commitment to education extends beyond her own teaching with a legacy of service to students that runs through her family, as her children are also educators. This dedication has enriched the Hazel Park School community, creating a culture of collaboration, support, and excellence. We're so lucky to have Mrs. Watts in Hazel Park and at Webb. We're grateful for all that she has done for our students, families, colleagues, and community. Congratulations.
Cassandra Brown is an exceptional educator whose dedication, generosity, and passion have profoundly impacted Hazel Park Junior High for over 25 years. As a PE and health teacher, she builds strong trusting relationships with students and staff, creating a supportive and welcoming environment. Beyond the classroom, she plays a vital role in organizing PBIS committee activities, student council events, and school-wide celebrations, often donating her own time and money to ensure students have memorable experiences. Her leadership in events like the December to Remember raffle demonstrates her commitment to student well-being, providing essentials and holiday gifts for those in need. Cassandra's caring and compassionate nature sets her apart as a true pillar of the school community. She is a mentor, role model, and advocate for students, always going the extra mile to make them feel valued and supported. Her willingness to help, whether coaching, coordinating school events, or simply being a trusted adult for students, has left a lasting impact on everyone around her. As she approaches retirement, her absence will be deeply felt, but her legacy of kindness, dedication, and school spirit will continue to inspire. Cassandra Brown is truly deserving of recognition for her unwavering commitment to education and the student she serves.
Okay, and the high school Teacher of the Year is Cedar O'Shab. So, Ms. O'Shab, Madame O'Shab, for the French, did I say that correctly, was nominated by many staff members, not just one or two. Lots of people nominated her, and there's so many reasons why. She's an extraordinary educator with over 30 years of dedication and passion that have profoundly impacted her students, colleagues, the entire school community. She's committed to student success, utilizing innovative teaching strategies and fostering an inclusive and engaging learning environment. Beyond her classroom, she supports fellow educators, coordinates testing, thank you very much, and ensures strong parental involvement, all while prioritizing student well-being. Her boundless energy, those of you who didn't know, she's a runner and a previous boxer. Yes, I learned many things about Cedar recently. She's amazing. Her kindness and creativity make her an invaluable asset to our school district. Respected and admired by students, staff, and parents alike, Ms. O'Shab is the heart of the school community. She connects with students of all backgrounds, earning their trust and respect, even among those facing behavioral challenges. With expertise across multiple subjects and a passion for the French language, she has enriched students' lives through cultural immersion trips to Paris. As a mentor to new educators and a champion of lifelong learning, her impact extends far beyond the classroom, making her truly deserving of this recognition. I have a few other important things I want to state that some of the nominations. One of the people who nominated her stated that, "On top of her high workload, she is the first person to volunteer for anything that is needed. Her ambition and dedication is admired by the entire staff. Her name is the first on everybody's lips when asked, 'Who is the best teacher at the high school?'" Staff and students both. Students from all grades engage with her frequently during passing time, where if you stand nearby, you will be blown away by the sheer volume of students that engage with her warmly on a daily basis. Even though students with behavioral issues are quick to anger normally, but show nothing but respect and admiration for Ms. O'Shab." Additionally, another one who nominated her said she is the, as a mentor, I apologize. Ah, here we go. She, with over 30 years of experience, she said she has served as a mentor to many new educators. In fact, every year, when I say, "Who can I ask to mentor the new ones?", she's the first to say, "I'll do it. I'll do it," no matter what the content, and they all come to her for all the advice. And I go to her all the time. She has a sheer heart of gold. One more thing, we did have a parent submit. Ms. Jackson submitted. I can't read the whole thing, but I did want to make sure that I stated some of the things that she said. She says, "Ms. O'Shab has dedicated so much of her time to helping my son try to learn French. He struggled sometimes keeping his focus, but Ms. O'Shab regularly tweaked her teaching style to accommodate him. Extra reminders here and there, breaking down the information, so she was teaching it in different ways so that her son could understand. Additionally, she took time, her own time, even in the summer, to get some paperwork done to help her student, and the parent said that she couldn't thank her enough for that. She is the perfect example of a teacher who deserves the Teacher of the Year award. She's dedicated to helping her students learn, creative, and adjusting her methods to accommodate children who learn differently, and she is genuinely concerned about their well-being. Congratulations."
For the high school.
Oh, as well invited. Would anybody like to comment to our teachers, and then we'll move to the high school student? No? Great job, teachers. All very well-deserved recognition. We'll go to high school report.
Go HP staff.
First, congratulations.
Can we take Jeremiah's picture, too?
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Hi, my name is Jeremiah Kemp. I am the student representative at Hazel Park High School. I am a senior, current senior. I'm just going to go over some couple of things that's going on at the high school. Senior banquet is next Thursday, March 6, at the banquet center in Warren. Tickets are $35, and the last day to order them is this Thursday. Winter sports is almost finished now. They're doing a great job. Spring trials are starting soon, later, early March, and later, later March. Make sure you have a physical on file before April 15 or later. Freshman pregame is March 12, and then right afterward is parent orientation at 6:00 PM for the, for parents of the next year's freshmen. Families, please check your power schools. For all emergency contacts, please change all your email addresses and phone numbers to get that all updated. And in late, in late March, we'll be starting course selections for 8th through 11th graders for the next year, next year's schedule. Next Thursday, band is going to festival, so please go, go ahead. We'll band. Tomorrow, there'll be an LT field trip for 10th graders. Chrysler Field Trip is in late March. And last thing I want to talk about is the upcoming Drama Spring production. Sorry for my tardiness. I was just there at rehearsal. We have our youth ensemble there today. We have over 70 students in the production. It's, the production is James and the Giant Peach. Please order your tickets now at hazelparkdrama.org. And yeah, thank you so much.
Band Festival, I'm not sure.
Because I was looking in the, you know, Facebook.
Yeah, they don't compete at that record.
That's okay. I'm having mat issues. It drives me nuts. Okay, we're on to... Oh, chair mat. What did he do? Just call him out like that?
He's in the room over there.
We're going to find out. I thought we were just talking bad about men, which I'm in support of. Today, me, too. I wasn't going to knock it down. Okay, our next order of business is the BCBA presentation. I don't know who's giving that.
Thank you for having us tonight. We're excited to introduce you to our BCBAs. We have here with us tonight Elizabeth Tosto. She's our district BCBA. And Ann Parker, she works at Edison as our BCBA. And just a little introduction, a BCBA, it stands for Board Certified Behavior Analyst. So they're new to the district this year and have been amazing, made a great difference with our students, our teachers, paraprofessionals, and our families. So really excited for them to show you what they do every day and allow you to ask some questions about all of their fantastic skills and what they're teaching our staff and students. All right, you guys are off.
You guys can stand it, though.
Sure. All right. Hello. So, as Dr. Papazian said, that BCBA stands for Board Certified Behavior Analyst. They They are regulated by the Behavior Analyst Certification Board. We hold a graduate level of education in behavior analysis. And to become credentialed, you must pass a board exam and maintain a certification through every two-year cycle. We need to maintain about 32 CEUs, including those that cover ethics and supervision learning activities in those two years. And we are also independent practitioners who can provide behavior analytical services. So aside from the schools, behavior analysts can also work in settings like clinical settings, hospital, residential, other settings like that for independent practice as well.
How many of you know what ABA is? You? Oh, yes. Yeah, sorry. Got it, thank you. I just asked how many know what ABA is. Just a few hands. So I just wanted to explain it really quick. So ABA stands for Applied Behavior Analysis. That's the service that behavior analysts do provide. And what we do is we work to either increase or decrease specific behaviors that are considered socially significant and impactful to the students that we work with. So I just kind of wanted to go over that too, because I know ABA is still such like a new term out there. So those are the types of things that we work on and target with the students that we provide services to.
So here at Hazel Park, our BCBA job description is that we work under the supervision of our Student Services Program Director. And the BCBA collaborates with classroom teachers. We work with support staff like paraprofessionals and other like occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech therapists. We implement, we help them to design and implement, evaluate behavioral intervention plans, also called BIPs, that you may hear them termed, and for these, our special education students. We also provide consultation, coaching, and one-to-one group presentations and classroom support, instructional and behavioral strategies for special education teachers, paraprofessionals, and other support staff as mentioned. So what support provided for students and staff, what this looks like is specifically that we are both included in our KIP team. These are key identified personnel. So anytime you hear of a KIP team being called, this is when students are in crisis. Our key identified personnel are called at that time. This is kind of where we have been talking a lot, and most of you have probably heard a lot about restraint and seclusion numbers for Hazel Park and how we're working to decrease those numbers. So part of that initiative was to bring BCBA's in on the team to help develop plans that allowed us to come up with strategies that would help decrease those escalated behaviors that often led to the restraint and seclusion. So in, with that said, when the key, the KIP team is called, we are part of the team that will make those decisions in the moment. So we make the decision whether or not restraint and/or seclusion is needed for that specific situation. So we are looking at like imminent harm, imminent danger, risk and safety to others as well as the student. So we are part of that team that does make those decisions. We do have adopted Ucaru training this year, so this is a restraint-free and trauma-informed crisis management. As far as Beth and I across Edison, I have, all of our staff right now has been trained at Edison. So we are 100% trained in Ucaru, and we are currently using and piloting this in our elementary classrooms. Our elementary classrooms are actually the ones that have produced the highest numbers of those restraints and seclusion over the past couple of years. So those are really the group that we have really targeted, and really happily, we are reporting that I think we're down about, what, 98% of restraint and seclusions as of right now. So those are numbers that are looking really great, and they have maintained thus far since the beginning of the school year. Beth here has also been working on training others in the district. I think you guys are kind of focusing right now on your behavioral paras and your self-contained classrooms, correct?
Yes, yep. We have one elementary school that has a classroom that has been trained, and then we are planning on training another elementary school and all the self-contained rooms in that, that building.
So we still are using and utilizing CPI, the Crisis Prevention Intervention. We are still using that, but we have adapted the Ucaru training to just kind of help, help guide us towards more of like a restraint-free practice when needed. We also have provided paraprofessional training. Beth and I both presented a Behavior Basics workshop to them district-wide for a para-pro-PD training, and I want to say we had about 50-plus paras show up, so we had a really great turnout. We do assist with functional behavior assessments, so our special education teams are already implementing these in schools, but we have kind of, kind of are brought in at certain times, and we'll talk about that a little later, about like when we are kind of brought into that process and when the need for a BCBA to step in arises. And we also work on those behavior, the positive behavior support plans as well, we'll include our feedback on those. We work a lot on establishing an efficient way to collect data. So this can look like paper, electronic graphing. What is really hard is, data is really, really important to what we do here. This is really how we, we choose and we determine when an intervention is necessary as well as when an intervention is being effective and when it is not effective. So it helps us to make those decisions. So data collection also is a little bit of a double-edged sword because it's very difficult, it can be very difficult to collect in the classroom. So if we have any teachers here today, you probably can agree that data collection is really tough to take in the classroom, especially when you're managing multiple other students and you're having to take individual data. So we really work with the staff, and we help develop a functional way and practical way to take effect data, but also make it very effective as well to be very meaningful for us when we determine these interventions. Assisting with read, observations, we attend IEPs and any behavior support meetings. We analyze ongoing student data, so that data that we are asking our classroom staff and teachers to take, we are using that and putting it to good use to make those database decisions. We provide and observe, modify, and model interventions as needed as well. So not only are we giving our recommendations, but we are going into the classroom and we are modeling, showing them what it looks like, giving feedback, just to make sure that everyone is understanding the intervention and everyone is implementing it consistently across the board. And then there's also an option for us to provide caregiver, caregiver training when requested and when needed as decided by the IEP team.
Okay, so I'm going to go over now a little bit of what the referral process and how it is determined that a referral needs to be made for BCBA services with the district. So a lot of times what this looks like is the individual buildings request for assistance team. They have determined that all tier one and tier two levels of support have been exhausted in an attempt to decrease behavior or sometimes even increase a specific behavior if they've been working on it for a while. Also, building, you know, requests for assistance team, they might also to identify that they just need support in development of new strategies of a current behavior plan. Maybe it's a student that they've been working with for a while, and they just kind of need like a fresh set of eyes to come in and just come up with maybe a new strategy or some new ideas as well. Okay, so we actually do have a referral form that we ask the staff utilizes too across the district. It's a Google form, and just a couple of things that are on the form that are helpful for us to determine if the student does need that higher tier three level of assistance. Their demographic information is included, the reason for their referral, specifics about their target behaviors, so like what they look like, any data, if there's data available, we definitely want to see that too. Known antecedents, so antecedents are things that occur before a behavior occurs. So we want to make sure we have an idea of that as well, and current and prior, any current and prior interventions that have already been tried. And then specific services that are being requested, whether it's somebody to come in and help with writing the positive behavior support plan, conducting a functional behavior assessment, helping with data collection, conducting any observations, parent training or parent support, those types of things too as well. And then this, after following a referral, we have a whole set of steps that we do. We start with an observation. This can be a singular observation if determined needed, maybe it takes, you know, just one to kind of come in and come up with the strategies. Most likely though, it's more than one. So repetitive observations to really get an idea of what the behavior looks like and how we should intervene. So we'll observe the student in the classroom and in any other settings that the behavior has reported to been occurring in. We'll want to make sure we observe the student in that environment as well. We are going to ask the teacher and the staff that work directly with the student lots of questions. We're going to interview them regarding the behavior. They know their student the best, so we're definitely going to collaborate with them. If available already, we're going to review any data, and we might actually too sometimes need to assist the team with coming up with the best way to collect data that represents both the behavior but also it's, it's manageable for the teacher as well. We will determine if the behavior meets that tier three kind of criteria to proceed with like the BCBA coming in and providing services. We'll identify strategies and/or make modifications to the current strategies that are both function and evidence-based for the team to begin implementing. Well, from there, we're going to want to meet with the team to discuss these strategies or any positive behavior support plan ideas that we have for the team. Next, we're going to assist with the development of their positive behavior support plan or oversee any new implemented strategies. So it's not just, here's the strategies, go at it. There's, it's very systematic in terms of, let's talk about these ideas, what's going to work, what's not going to work, but also to providing the next step, the training that's needed for the paraprofessionals, any training that the teaching staff might need specifically, and ongoing, doing ongoing observations and school visits to see if we need to modify our interventions in any way and if they're effective. And then lastly, there, if the data is showing a reduction in the target behavior, we're going to meet with the team to determine if BCBA consultation, if it needs to be modified a little bit. I know with me, I, when I'm starting out with a student, it's regularly I'm going into the classroom, but as we start interventions, we see some progress, I try to fade myself back if needed, if the student needs it and the team determines, like we don't, we don't, you know, the student's making progress with the intervention that we have in. So we might switch it to, you know, bi-weekly, monthly check-ins to just make sure that the student is still, you know, progressing with the plan that we have in. And then here's just some examples across the district that Ann and I, different types of behavior plans that we've created. So reductions in physical aggression, verbal outbursts, things like swearing, reduction in inappropriate touching of others. We've done some functional communication training, which is basically teaching communication skills in replacement of a challenging behavior, increasing those positive transitions between environments, increasing remaining on task, increasing tolerance with instructional demands or non-preferred tasks, reinforcing tolerance and desensitizing them to specific sensory input, so things like wearing headphones, maybe a sudden change in their routine, using fidgets or other tactile items if needed, specific coping strategies, increasing self-management skills, so that emotional regulation piece, increasing social skills and decreasing elopement and increasing time spent in the classroom. So here's just like a little bit of data on where we stand with how many students that we're serving in the district. So since September of 2024, 45 students across the district have had their school team request assistance for higher levels of challenging behavior, and as of right now, each school in our district has utilized BCBA consultation this year.
We wanted to share a couple other things. So out, aside from working in the classroom and in the schools, we together collaborated on something that we are working on rolling out district-wide. We created this six-step stages of student crisis management. So when the special services team, student services team came to us and said, "Hey, we would love to have something easy to reference for everyone across the district, whether it's a secretary at the front office, whether it is a substitute teacher, it's our general, you know, everyday staff, something for them to pick up and have a little step-by-step of what to do when our students become escalated." So Beth and I came together and came up with this visual. We know everyone loves a good visual, so I, I'm not sure what the status is, I don't, are we working on getting this? Awesome.
It's at the printer.
Okay, so these have been sent off to be printed, and hopefully we're going to be able to distribute these district-wide and hopefully help people that are in the moment of crisis, when you're kind of froze and you don't know what to do, you have a little visual to hopefully look at and, and give you some ideas of where to start. Another thing that I wanted to bring up, this is something specific that I do at Edison. So Edison is our center-based program here at Hazel Park. We service nearly 100 students, roughly 100 students, give or take, and that is kindergarten through 12th grade. And all of these students have more severe challenging behaviors, and that's why they're, they're placed over with us at Edison. Something that we were specifically targeting, so aside from our individual work on decreasing behaviors, we looked at a systemic problem that we had with our upperclassmen. So this is ranging from our 7th grade to our 12th graders. So we had, this year, we had a lot of students basically spent outside of the classroom. So maybe refusing to go to class, refusing to complete work. So we got together, our PBS team, PBIS team got together, and we were brainstorming some ideas. So what we did aside from our PBIS monthly celebrations that we do do that is available to all students, we incentivized them with something more special and individualized. And so we worked on them getting to earn to go to a January jingle. We made a huge deal about it. We wanted to decrease that elopement from class or that leaving class and spending more time in peer conflicts and being off-task in the classroom. And we wanted to increase their participation, we wanted them to increase work completion, and of course, like increase some more positive social relationships with, with peers. Over at Edison, we work off a point system, so our students earn points daily, and their max points are 40 points per day, so we took the month of January, and we made it very attainable. So we weren't saying that they needed 100% of their points every day, but we, we made it pretty attainable for them. If they had pretty decent days with their points, and it would reflect through their points, and so they would have to earn, I think this says, it was 520 points to earn their January jingle. And in January, at the end of the month, we had 13 students attend out of maybe roughly about 80 of those students from 7th to 12th grade. So, but with our February incentive event, we now have about 28 students on track to attend this Friday. So we really had a big increase. We had a lot of students very excited about attending the jingle, and we had a lot of students that were a little disappointed that they weren't able to attend. So it really So it really incentivized them to stay on track, to focus, have something to look forward to, and it turned out to be a really fun success and they had a really wonderful, wonderful time. So I just kind of wanted to share a little bit with you on how not only are we working individually in the classroom, but we can do things to do, work to incentivize our group behaviors and students as a whole, getting them work together, getting them to work together. I believe this concludes our presentation unless you guys have anything to add.
Okay.
Before we close out, I just wanted to acknowledge, I'm sure you were able to really hear and see that Ms. Tosto and Ms. Parker are very well-established in their field and we are extremely fortunate to have them at Edison and across the district. But a few things that I do want to highlight with what they do is that as we spoke in an earlier presentation about our reduction of seclusion and restraint, that many of our para-professionals have proceeded on with an opportunity that we provided to become RBTs. So registered behavior technicians and Ms. Parker and Ms. Tosto are actually helping to oversee some of that training component as they finish through that and support students across the district. The other thing that I wanted to make note as well is although we are a student services department and we do support special education across the district, this is not just for only special ed students. So our BCBA support, as Ms. Parker mentioned, you know, as teams have exhausted tier one or tier two interventions within their buildings, oftentimes they may come together as teams and, and you know, they may be a request for assistant meetings where they come together to say, you know, these students, we've tried A, B, C, and D, it's just not working. And so we think at this time, it's, it's time to reach out and utilize the support of our BCBA's. And so that's where they come in as well. So it is, it's not just for our students that are, you know, receiving specialized instruction, it truly is for all of our students across our district. So we're very fortunate with that. And then lastly, you know, as we, Dr. Papazian and I spoke at our last board meeting, talking about that reduction of our seclusion and restraint across our district, you know, to be quite frank, we really couldn't do it without the expertise of our BCBA's as well. So we're very fortunate to have them. So I think that takes us to our end.
Is anyone have any questions?
No. Thank you. It's nice to hear the improvement each meeting we come to. So fantastic, thank you. So we're making a little switch here. We're going to do the web presentation first and the resource will follow.
A teacher and a student here who've been waiting to present, so I appreciate you guys moving us up. So I have brought with, or we have brought tonight, this is Chloe Burnett. And I'm going to let them tell their story and with her is Lori Hazen. And they have a student-led club at Webb and I'm going to let them tell their story. I'm going to let them tell their story about how the club got started and where the idea came from and what they're doing. It's pretty cool.
So I am Lori Hazen, 5th grade teacher at Webb. I'm honored to be here with my student Chloe Burnett. We have a pretty cool slideshow. I don't know if, so, oh, sorry. If only I knew what I was doing. Okay. Right here?
Yep.
Okay. Chloe asked me last year to sponsor a club and the club is an American Sign Language club. I'm so sorry.
People at home will hear you.
Sorry, sorry people at home. So it was toward the end of the year and I told her it was too late for an actual club, but we could squeeze in some recess time. And we were shocked by the number of students that gave up the recess to come to our club. So I promised her last year that we would do an official club this year. So every other Thursday we meet and as I go through the slides, these are, I'm going to read the slides to make it not quite so nerve-wracking for Chloe, but Chloe's going to do sign, she's going to use American Sign Language and you'll see why in just a moment. But when I read the words, they're mostly words from Chloe. Sound good? Okay. Okay, and these are Chloe's words. Why I wanted to start a sign language club. Am I going too fast or are we good? Okay. I wanted to start this club because my mom is deaf. It can be difficult when people exclude my mom because they can't understand her and she can't understand them. What we are learning now, we're learning simple greetings like how to say hello. We continue to practice the alphabet. Our club members watched and listened to a read aloud using ASL. And that's a picture of a couple of our cuties. There are more, but that was all we could get that day. What we will learn later in the year, we're planning to learn harder words. Have conversations with each other. And this part almost makes me cry. Hopefully have my mother come in so we can practice talking to her. Sorry. That's it.
Mrs. Hazen, I just wanted to share though, what did, Mrs. Hazen, what did you tell me about the lesson plans and the, she has her own cupboard in your room and she comes in and does her lesson plans each week for the club that they're going to have. So she's really taking this seriously. I think we have a future teacher in our, in our midst. So we're super proud of Chloe and Mrs. Hazen for sponsoring it and thanks for letting us share.
Yes, thank, thank you so much for putting me on the agenda. So thank you, Board, because that clock makes me nervous. So I don't have a clock running, but I won't take long, I promise. First of all, thank you very much, Board, and for having me here to talk about the annual Resource Fair. Actually, we call it the, it was the third annual Family Resource Extravaganza and Chili Cook-Off, second year for Chili Cook-Off. It was on Saturday, February 8th from 11:00 to 2:00. We had 222 people come through the fair. We had 53 vendors. We had around 25 baskets. Thank you, Board, for your basket. That was a favorite one. And I am going to go through some of the vendors because I would like the people at home and people of Hazel Park to know what, the kinds of organizations that come to the Resource Fair in case they need that resource or get information from that resource. I know there's 53, but I will go quickly. The Alliance of Coalition for Healthy Communities, we gave away books. The CARE, C-A-R-E, of Southeastern Michigan. Chartwells did the Discovery Kitchen. They also donated donuts and coffee in the morning for our vendors as well as the fixins for our chili and they served the chili. So they were big contributors to our Resource Fair. Thank you to Dan and Brenda, because Brenda kind of took over that day, I think. The National Honor Society from Hazel Park High School did face painting for us. Children's Special Health Care Services of Oakland County, the city of Hazel Park. Is it Jared? Yep, Jared made chili and then stayed there for the duration of the fair. The CNS Healthcare, Cornwell Health, Cranbrook came and did some activities and made people eat bugs. Well, they didn't make them, they didn't hold them down, but they encouraged people to eat the bugs and they got a little sticker. Creative Kids Market came, DTE came and they were so excited last year and when we contacted them, they were like, of course we're coming and they've already signed up for next year. So very cool. Carolyn Demus did a family photo. So if the family wanted to have family photos done, they could have a family photo and then she would text it to them. I had them done last year and they're beautiful. She is a great photographer. Ferndale Senior Coordinator, I made a connection because I think they're part of the Ferndale Re-Center, Recreation Center too? Yep, so they are thinking of doing some programming for our summer with us. And also Franklin Wright Settlements, Ms. Lovely came and did some activities with kids. Gleaners Community Food Bank of Southeastern Michigan, Great Start Collaborative Oakland County, Webster, Ms. Heather had a table there, Habitat for Humanity. Harold came and did caricatures for kids. It was really cool. So a lot of people donating their time. Community Park, uh, community, Hazel Park Community Coalition, the Hazel Park Library did activities, Randy and Amy, always somebody who does a lot for us. McGruff from the Police Department in Hazel Park came, the Hazel Park Promise Zone came, Joan from our Hazel Park Latchkey, our Student Services Department came in case people had questions, youth assistants came. The Athletic Department, Fire Department came, grr, they won the Chili Cook-Off again. I'm glad they came. They hung around because we were doing all of the chili in the, so they didn't have to serve it this year in all their garb, but they did hang around and kind of talk to people, so that was really neat. The Lions Club gave away water at their station. The HR Department from Hazel Park came trying to drum up some paraeducators and other people that we have jobs open. Lighthouse, Manager of Youth Programs came, Michigan Department of Health and Human Resources. The Michigan Education Justice Coalition brought voting, a voter registration for anybody that wanted to register, as well as they did surveys with parents because we're looking at doing parent workshops. So they kind of surveyed parents and said, you know, what is it that we could do workshops on? So we're working with them and Ms. Brooke and I and the Community Coalition to kind of come up with a parent series of workshops for our parents to come to. And that's, that was a pretty cool. The Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union was there. Mike McFall, our state representative, was there all day and helped me do the Chili Cook-Off announcements for the winners. That was cool. We also had Mobile Mission, Mobile Mitten, and Mobile Mitten does vision, they have a mobile vision eye care where they can do the exams right there. They had a chair, they, you know, if somebody wanted to do something, they could do it right there. It's pretty cool. They're, actually, I think we're partnering them, with them. Moms Against Gun Violence, Oakland 80, Oakland Community Health did a vaccination clinic. So we had whooping cough, pneumococcal pneumonia, COVID flu and some childhood vaccinations that people could get while they were at the fair. The Oakland County Michigan Works was there as well. Smart Bus, I'm almost done. United Way, of course, came, they're good partners. Water Resource Commission, YMCA did some activities with kids and the Hazel Park Civic Action Network came. So those were all the amazing people that came. And some of them that couldn't make it are already trying to sign up for next year. So we, we thought we got started early enough, but I think right after the hometown huddle, Ms. Brooke and I start talking about this event because it's a daunting task. I do have some thank yous. First and foremost, my co-host, Brooke Barnett, who is the Community School Coordinator at United Oaks. Stand up, Brooke. If I call your name, stand up. If any of the NHS, NHS kids that came could stand, Debbie, George and Carolyn Demus did, George and Debbie did, not only stayed there all day, but made chili. Kathy Ryan, Ryan Voss, Jamie B., Sean, Lisa Bernison Thelma, all, we could not have put this together without that team of people. They called, they checked, they emailed, they did so much work on this. Last but not least, we had a group of boys that came in from Wayne State University. They are the Alpha Sigma Phi Fraternity Boys. DeMarcus is here, Matthew is here and Philip is here. There you go. They came in, there were two more, Samuel and Leo, the president was there. They were there all day, stepping and fetching and pulling and moving and do this, do that. And they've offered to volunteer for some other things. So let's have a round of applause for all the helpers. So now I have volunteers called the NHS, the, you know, Community Engagement Team and the frat boys. So those are my, those are my volunteers. I do want to thank everybody that helped out, everybody that came, and I feel like, you know, we, this event just keeps getting bigger and better. So thank you so much for your time. Any questions?
Thank you for your time to put that together for our community and for the great teamwork. It takes a team to pull all of that work off and to improve every year. So thank you. Dr. Domich, Leo presentation.
Good evening. So I'm coming before the Board with the regular quarterly report that we are required to do as part of a Leo organization. As you know, Leo is Literacy Essentials Oakland and the primary piece that that supports us with is that they totally fund one of our instructional coaches. So that is a great savings to our district and with that funding, they also have professional learning and a number of different pieces that we are involved in as a district. One of the most recent things that they did was they allowed us to forego, if you will, going to another school district to do instructional walkthroughs. They know that we have a pretty deep commitment to the work that we're doing with American Reading Company. So instead of making us go out of the district, the ISD came into the district. They came into the district, they worked with our art coach, they worked with our building leaders and our instructional coaches and had a great day learning what we're doing in Hazel Park. They were very complimentary and it also checked off that box as part of the Leo initiative. Always, they help us as well with some of our school improvement goals, specifically focused on academic vocabulary and math. And along with those other supports, they provide resources in terms of materials and consultants. So that's my brief Leo summary, quarterly as you will. You know, it's pretty much the same thing every time, but it's deepening our work and helping us get to where we need to be with our strategic plan goals. Any questions?
Questions? No questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are now at the public discussion portion. Thank you. So this is a business meeting of the Board of Education held in public, not a public community meeting. The Board has provided two opportunities during the meeting for the public to address the Board respectfully. The Board members will not engage in comments, but be assured we are listening carefully. Please state your name and address and you have three minutes. And first is Jarrett Jackson. Jennifer Jackson?
Yeah. Hi, my name is Jennifer Jackson. I live at 139 West Robert Avenue. I've had many positive experiences here in the district with Dr. Krupi over the years and I was not especially surprised to hear what happened on January 27th because it seems like it was a slow burn for some reason. I do have a lot of questions though, because I've had a lot of positive experiences and exchanges with her over the years. One, what written board policy was potentially violated? When was the potential violation discovered and by whom? How long has the board known a policy may have been violated? Most of the board members are active on social media and have public postings visible by anyone? Is the board aware of online bullying of Dr. Krupi? Are any of the members of the board friends with administrators of those pages? I'm very nervous, I don't speak publicly. Have any of the board members actively defended or tried to quell the hostile written dialogue that takes place in those forums about Dr. that takes place in those forums about Dr. Croupy? It's even present on the district's pages as well. Is the board aware that the individuals who are participating in the online bullying of Dr. Croupy are encouraging her firing? Some even promote the idea that consolidating Hazel Park schools with other districts is actively being looked at. Have any of the board members had their photographs taken with individuals who repetitively bully our former superintendent? How does the board, how long does the board anticipate this investigation will take? How much are taxpayers paying for the legal counsel who have been hired to investigate this potential policy violation? On October 15th, an incumbent board member chose not to participate in a town hall for election, for the election that was happening. They sat in the audience, though, and asked questions of the other people who were running during the election. Those questions had to do with laying off employees and budget shortfalls. Were those questions being asked because some of the board members knew something months prior to the January 27th meeting? Does the legal counsel know about the actions that took place at the town hall? Does this investigation justify board members accessing emails and some, of some or all of HBSD employees and students? Will details of the investigation be provided to the community, parents, stakeholders, with its complete, when it's complete and in its entirety? How many people outside of the board know details about the policy violation? Is that it? Okay. Jared will finish up for me.
All right, thank you.
Jared Jackson, 139 West Robert, Hazel Park, obviously. These are all questions my wife wrote. I'm just finishing up for her. During the closed sessions on January 27th, 27th were the terms non-disciplinary and paid leave used as bargaining chips to get a unanimous vote. Do we have room in the budget to pay for two superintendent salaries until Dr. Croupy's contract expires? How many interim superintendents were interviewed before the current person was selected for the role? How many professionals who can fill the role of interim superintendent rejected offers to come to Hazel Park? What reasons were given as to why they rejected becoming HP's interim superintendent? Is the new interim superintendent a local Hazel Park resident? What happens if the investigation finds that no policy was broken? Will the board offer to reinstate Dr. Croupy? What happens if Dr. Croupy provides evidence that the Board of Education has created a hostile work environment, one that prevents her from doing the work effectively and is unable to return to this district? What are the financial costs associated with Hazel Park, Hazel Park School District not fulfilling their contractual obligation to Dr. Croupy, and how does this affect taxpayers? Have any of the current or past members of Hazel Park Board of Education violated any policies that are in place to protect the students, teachers, parents, community, and stakeholders? How do you expect the community, community to trust the Board of Education after this? Why do I have so many questions? Because the word transparency has been bastardized in this community. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ryan Voss, 803 East Myers. I stand here tonight deeply disappointed in this school board. I once voted for almost all of you, believing you would lead with integrity, transparency, and in the best interest of our students and staff. I expected better. On the very first morning after removing Dr. Croupy, while central office staff had zero direction, two board members entered her office. They didn't acknowledge us or explain their actions. They simply walked in and rummaged through her belongings, files, and emails, laughing, as if they had accomplished something great. This is just one example of what we witnessed in central office. The public doesn't see the lack of professionalism, the power plays, and the disregard for ethical leadership. As a result, staff now work in an unstable, stressful environment, filled with fear, uncertainty, and intimidation. Yes, we're intimidated. Some of us are here tonight because we are frustrated, confused, and deeply concerned about the direction of our district. The sudden and unexplained removal of our superintendent was disruptive and frankly seemed personal. When decisions are based on personal motives, it's the students, staff, and community who suffer. So I ask, what board policy was violated to justify this investigation? No reason has been given, making it appear that none existed. Instead, it seems this board removed Dr. Croupy first and looked for justification later. That's not accountability, that's a fishing expedition. And what about the cost? The investigation that could have happened without removing Dr. Croupy, an interim superintendent salary on top of Dr. Croupy's contract, and the law firm guiding the board through this mess, cost unknown. All unnecessary expenses, draining resources that should go to students, teachers, and classrooms. And for what? If this investigation turns up nothing, then what? Will Dr. Croupy return after being publicly humiliated? Or will taxpayers be forced to buy out her contract, adding yet another financial strain? Beyond this financial waste, this board's disregard for ethical boundaries is alarming. Two board members accessed confidential files and emails without oversight or justification. Let that sink in. One even questioned staff absences as if that were the priority. This overreach has created a toxic environment where employees feel vulnerable and afraid to speak up. The reality is, this board has proven incapable of making decisions that are in the best interest of students and staff. Every decision made thus far has been impulsive and self-serving with no thought for the consequence. How can we possibly trust you after this? What's worst, what's worse is the blatant violation of board procedures. A majority vote of four does not equate to proper board approval if the entire board isn't involved in the decision-making. This community deserves better, our students deserve better, and we demand better.
Hello, my name is Eric Confer. I live at 117 West Annaball Avenue. So I was a volunteer wrestling coach last year and developed a great relationship with our wrestlers at Hazel Park, and have a deep bond with a lot of them, and a lot of them actually have great potential to go and do further things. As you guys know, we only have one Hazel Parker from Hazel Park High School to be an Olympian, and Steve Frazier. You know, so wrestling has a very big background here. When I was hired in this year as the Assistant varsity wrestling coach, I was put through the wringer in order to become hired. I had to provide not only just six references, but that wasn't enough, it was 12. And then my, my paperwork wasn't served to me until halfway through the season, which then I found out that my wages were cut in half from what I was originally told in the first place. So with that being said, I have 28 years in this sport. I know this sport better than most people. How many people in this room have stepped on a wrestling mat and know what it, know what it takes to be a wrestler, and a good one? Wrestling builds confidence. You don't have a team to stand behind you, step on the mat alone. So it teaches these young men and women to be able, be accountable for themselves. It builds better humans. It's by far the hardest sport, and when I found out that we weren't allowed to wrestle with our kids, all the other coaches in MHSAA find out we're a laughingstock, and they laugh at that matter. Because have any of you guys seen somebody get paralyzed? I have, because that kid didn't have the know-abouts how to fall correctly. None of his teammates were strong enough to hold him up and coach him and be able to say, hey, look, fall this way, do that that way. We went up against Dundee for our regional championship and lost 81 to 0 because we weren't able to provide the actual good coaching which wrestling needs in order to provide a good wrestler opportunities to be able to protect himself and be able to make good judgments on the mat. That comes with somebody who knows exactly what they're doing at all times and being a hands-on coach. If you can't be a hands-on coach, then I don't want to come back next year. And I doubt you'll find anybody who's more passionate about the sport than me. I have 28 years in this, as I said. I didn't have a coach that pushed me and allowed me to be able to go above and beyond what I needed to do. I had to do that myself. And because of that, I have a, my C6 and C7 vertebrae look like this, because in order to make varsity, I had to wrestle two weight classes. He didn't give me the shot. He favoritized the seniors and the upperclassmen versus somebody who actually had the skill and dedication. That's what wrestling is, and you're going to lose a great wrestling program if it continues to go this way.
Anyone else wishing, wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we move on to a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda. I'd like to pull out the personnel and then discuss the minutes, please. Support.
Okay, a motion was made by Heidi to pull out the personnel, supported by Debbie, for the consent agenda and discussion.
And the minutes.
Of the minutes. You want those pulled also?
I just, discussion on them is fine. I think we have to approve them. I was being told we have to approve the minutes within 30 days, so just a discussion.
Okay, so we can have the discussion now?
During the committee of the whole meeting, we talked about having Darren and I believe Monica volunteer, is that you? To meet and go over the minutes and maybe not make them so descrip, we wanted them more descriptive, but it seemed like they were very detailed, and maybe come up with a happy medium, and that has not taken place as scheduled to take place tomorrow. I just wanted to.
Yeah, Jamie asked me about it, and I said, you go ahead, because we were behind on the minutes, and you have to have them posted. So I told her to go ahead and give us what she had, and then we'd move forward.
Okay, so if there's any changes that need to be made to those, are we allowed to do that at the next meeting? Amend the minutes? Are we allowed to?
Not after the acceptance.
Okay. That's it?
From this agenda, can we also pull approval of the closed session minutes for 1/27/2025? We don't have them to review. We can't approve minutes that we have not reviewed. We do have the closed session minutes for January 13th, we do not have them for January
So you want to pull them for the next meeting?
If we could. I, I'm not comfortable voting to approve the closed session minutes for 1/27 without reviewing them. In our, in our packets, we only have January 13th, not. We have two closed sessions to approve and only one to review.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion to accommodate that.
So we'll pull those, what's that?
I said I'll amend my motion to accommodate that.
Thank you. If we need to support again, I'll happily do it.
Okay, so you're going to amend the motion to?
Support again. Sorry.
Amend the motion to pull the personnel recommendations and put them later on the agenda?
Yeah.
And table the closed session minutes from 1/27.
Correct.
Okay. Roll call. Or any more discussion? No?
I don't think.
Roll call.
Fortress?
Yes.
LeBramboys?
Yes. Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Rortee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
So we'll put personnel as the last agenda item?
Thank you.
Which will be P. Okay, now we need a motion for?
Did we say P?
Yes, it'll be P.
Closed session.
I move the Board of Education recession to closed session under item 81A to consider the dismissal, dismissal suspension or discipline of a student if the student or the student's parent or guardian request closed session hearing, and section 81F to review and consider the consent of an application of an employee to permit it under the Special Meetings Act. Special Meetings Act, sorry.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Heidi for closed session, support by April, any discussion? Okay, roll call for closed session.
Fortress?
Yes.
Ayton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
LeBramboys?
Yes.
Rortee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Need a motion to call the meeting back to order, please?
I'll make a motion to return to open session.
Support. Okay, motion made by Debbie, supported by April to call the meeting back to order. Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
LeFrohbois?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Sorry.
Fox?
Yes.
Ritchie?
Yes.
Yes. New business, student discipline, action item. Need a motion?
I move the Board of Education approve the transfer of student 202502245 to Advantage.
Second.
Motion by Monica, second by, was that Heidi?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion on the result? Okay, roll call, please.
Ritchie?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
LeFrohbois?
Yes.
Yes. The next item is hiring of the paraprofessional.
I move the Board of Education approve the hiring of Danielle Gurgenti as a paraprofessional for Hayes Park Schools as presented.
Second.
Motion by Monica to hire, recommend a paraprofessional, second by Heidi. Discussion? Okay, roll call.
Ritchie?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
LeFrohbois?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. MASB Board of Directors election.
President, we have to read the resolution now.
Oh, okay. Starting at the whereas.
Yes.
Whereas, Section 1230 of the Revised School Code requires that both district superintendents and boards to specifically approve the employment of district employees who have been convicted at any time in the past of a felony that is not listed, not a listed offense under the Sex Offender Registry Act. Whereas, information received by the administration indicates that Danielle Gurgenti, an applicant for the position of paraprofessional, was convicted of a felony controlled substance and delivery MCL 33374012CA, which is not a listed offense under the Sex Offender Registry Act almost 15 years ago. And whereas, the administration has done employment reference checks of Mrs. Gurgenti and has received positive feedback, has determined that such past offense has not adversely affected the employee's employment with other employees to date, does not believe that the offense will adversely affect the employee's employment with the district in the future. And as Mrs. Gurgenti's employment as a professional is recommended by the superintendent, be it resolved, that the board hereby approves the employment of Danielle Gurgenti as an employee of the district to begin work as a paraprofessional. Now, roll call. Right? Because it says ayes and nays.
Yes. Ritchie?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
LeFrohbois?
Yes.
Yes. Now, we're moving on to the MAS, MASB Board of Directors election. May I have a motion?
I move the Board of Education approve the nomination of, we haven't picked anybody yet, for the MASB Board of Directors as presented.
So, can we discuss before?
Yes. Yes.
Did you say a name?
We did. Well, we don't have a name.
We don't have a name yet because we haven't had a discussion.
Who's the second?
I'll second. An unknown name.
Okay, motion made by Heidi, second by Monica.
I'll amend it, Monica, we have the discussion.
And now, we have to discuss the people. There's eight seats open for the Michigan School Board Association, that's what we're voting on.
There's a total of eight people or one seat for?
There's one seat. One seat. One people voting.
Anybody have any recommendations? I know we've gotten little clips in our emails the last couple weeks.
I liked Randall Meisner from Fitzgerald. He received a President's Level Seven, which is the highest you can go. And he also has advocacy specialist and data specialty, which is the highest classes you can take in MASB. He has 13 years' experience as a board member, and he did all of that in 13 years, which I was pretty impressed with. He's from Fitzgerald, so it's kind of like our similar makeup of community. So, I thought he'd be a good spokesperson for the same kind of issues that we might be having.
Anyone else?
I'll mention that there was not a video interview, but we did receive communication from a candidate, Scott Wallace, who had a lot of legislative advocacy experience. And I certainly won't fight the nomination because I don't know this man, but he did present himself very well. And I think that both in Lansing and in Washington, we are in a place where legislative advocacy, especially for public education, is going to be incredibly important, and that may be a skill that lends itself well to the association as well.
I'd like to.
There were a few others. I listened to four people had video interviews, and there was a lot of experience out there. Do you want to make, do we want to go with Mr. Meisner, was it?
That was mine, and April was.
Well, there's only one seat.
But what was the other name that was brought forward?
Scott Wallace was the other one brought forward.
Well, somebody makes the motion to whichever one you want.
Is there a preference?
Where's Scott Wallace from?
Frazier.
Frazier.
Oh, yeah, I did, I like, both of those were kind of equal for me. Except, I think Andy Meisner had more classes under his belt, that was the reason I went with him.
Andy Meisner's a different guy, but it's Randy.
Randy, sorry.
He's a cool guy, but he doesn't want the job.
He doesn't want that job? Darn. Yeah, that's why I went with Randy, because he has more classes, that's all.
Okay, so please make a motion and put somebody's name in there.
Do you want to amend your motion, Heidi, or just add the name to it?
Yeah, I'm going to amend it, but is there a unanimous decision or discussion for going with Randall Meisner?
I feel like they both would get so. I think so. Sounds like it.
Okay. I would amend my motion, I make a motion to amend my motion to approve the nomination of Randall Meisner.
And I will support.
ASB Board of Directors.
Okay, motion made to recommend Randall Meisner Fitzgerald to the MASB seat, second by Monica. Discussion? All in favor? Oh, roll call.
Fortress?
Yes.
Ritchie?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
LeFrohbois?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Dance team competition overnight travel, motion, please.
I move, I move the Board of Education approve the dance team overnight travel to the national competition in Ohio as presented.
Support.
Okay, motion made to support the dance team competition at overnight travel, made by Heidi, second by Monica. Any discussion?
Just for the sake of discussion, I'm reading our memo, and it says that there is no cost associated to the district. They're just asking for the overnight permission with six coaches and another chaperoning adult. So, there is not, there's a zero dollar value hit to our finances.
Okay, thank you for that additional information, April. All in favor? Oh, you know, I want to do that because it's faster, but people tell me that they want individual votes, so I keep forgetting. Go ahead, Jamie.
Fortress?
Yes.
Ritchie?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
LeFrohbois?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries, and we have Edison camera purchase.
I move the Board of Education approve the purchase of cameras for Edison as presented.
Support.
Good evening. Coming to the board to ask for not, an amount not to exceed $7,000 for nine cameras at Edison. There are cameras, or there are, there's coverage that we don't have any cameras that we can't see, which tends to lead to a security risk. The original quote for these cameras was 7,600. I was able to get it down to 6182, and then put in their regular, a little over $800 just to cover costs of mounts, cabling, stuff like that. And we're saving on labor costs with us doing it in-house than if we were to bid this out. I would be comfortable saying that this would be a $15,000 to $20,000 project if we were to bid it out.
Nice bargaining there, Mr. Wilkins.
Are some of the cameras inside, outside? Yeah, there's a mix of inside and outside cameras. You guys are going to do all the work? Yes, sir. That's pretty amazing. That's a lot of time consuming. Special thanks to your team, you and your team.
And it's center fund money?
I did have it as center fund, but I believe the last one, they said it was going to be 31A Safety and Security Fund.
Oh, okay.
So.
That's good.
Do we have enough server space? Yes, we do.
Okay, all in favor of purchasing the cameras? I'm voting roll call. What? Roll call. Yes.
Ritchie?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
LeFrohbois?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Oh, Hinton, yes. Summer school, action item.
I move the Board of Education approve the early childhood through grade spa summer school program as presented.
Support.
Good evening again. So, I'm coming for the board to approve our early childhood, our Rising First through Rising Ninth, and our credit recovery slash enhance, diploma enhancement program. I understand, based on the last meeting of the whole meeting, there were a few questions around some of the numbers of students that we had in those programs, so I did bring the memo that was presented back in September. And I'm going to go over specifically the early childhood and the secondary because I know there are questions around that. So, in our early childhood or kindergarten readiness program, we had approximately 24 students, and 13 out of those 24 students had an attendance rate of 75% or higher. And that kindergarten readiness program really just runs four weeks. For our secondary program, we had 145 students registered, and those 145 students registered in 449 classes. So, credit, the credit recovery program and the diploma enhancement portion of it are really critical to our students, and I know that's really been a long time program that's really been very beneficial. I know there were some questions, I think, around the funding for the Rising First through Ninth, that is all grant funded. So, $450,000 coming from Ballmer is going to fund that program. The kindergarten readiness program and the high school program do not have grant funding. I know there were some question around that, and currently, we do not have funding to take care of that. Now, of course, we are always looking for other grants, but at this point, we do not have funding for that program. One of the things that I was going to address.
Do you want to grant funding for the program?
Correct. For kindergarten readiness and for the secondary. But one of the things that I was going to address is that in that number, which is really just an estimate of the high school being 111,000, there were opportunities for three elective classes to run. If the board is not comfortable with that number, we could pull those elective courses, and that might save between $35,000 to $40,000. Typically, we have, we had Wilding last year, we had, I think, a woods course last year, and we had a Spanish course. And they were credit bearing, so students did get left at, or some other world, real language credits. But if we're looking to reduce that a little bit, that could be a place that we do some reduction and pull those elective courses off of the secondary and just really focus on credit recovery and the diploma enhancement.
Pulling the electives would not have an impact on graduation?
It wouldn't. You know, it's a nice opportunity for students to do that because then it might give them an opportunity to take another course during the school year, but it's not something that a must be. So, again, if we're looking at those dollars, that could be a place that we adjust slightly.
Can you explain what diploma enhancement? I figured it was the extra classes, but is it?
It is. So, if you have a student, let's say a student wants to take a number of AP classes, and they have to get some of their general classes done, sometimes they'll take those classes in the summer so they can add additional AP courses. Or if they're looking to take a specific number, maybe they are very focused on getting an art degree as they graduate. They might take some courses in the summer like algebra or English so they can take those other courses during the school year.
Can I ask Crystal a question? Is Crystal here? Did we budget for all of this in our, in our amended budget we looked at last week?
Week what?
I think so, too.
Yeah, we asked the question last week and got it, yes, so I think so.
Yeah.
I think it's important to really, because I know as a high school student of 40 years, it was important for my friends to be, the ones that weren't going so well, to be able to go to summer school and be able to take some extra classes so they can move on to their right grade. And also, I look at it as, if you're able to take woodshock or a foreign language, maybe, maybe that might inspire them to keep going to school or talk to their friends. I mean, if we get more enrollment, you know, that fall, we can pay for that, you know. I mean, if we get more enrollment, you know, that fall, we can pay for that, you know, with the numbers of students that come in. So I'm, I'm looking at it as a positive and it's for our students and I think we need to have it. That's just my personal opinion.
Any other discussion? Questions? No?
No, thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Fortress?
Yes.
Ruti?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
LeFrancois?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
The motion carries for summer school. Corrective action plan for finances, informational.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On January 31st, we received a letter from the Department of Treasury requesting, requiring the district to complete a corrective action plan. A corrective action plan is different than what the district has seen in the past when we've seen deficit elimination plans. A deficit elimination plan, we're already in trouble, we're already in deficit, and there's a lot of requirements for follow-up. The corrective action plan is, they send this to all school districts that their fund balance falls below 5%. And it's really to give us a chance to let them know what we're going to do to not get into deficit. So with the help from Dr. Dolmage and Sarah Bean, Student Services, Christie and Crystal, we were able to identify savings opportunities that really were already in place in the district. So one of the savings initiatives, one of the savings that we identified that I thought was really exciting, positive change, we expect our workers' comp premiums to go down next year from the successful seclusion and restraint procedures. From September through January, the workers' comp claims at Edison have gone down 50%. So, you know, knowing that this, this program is really effective, I think that's a really positive unintended consequence of that, that we'll, we should see some insurance savings. The plan was submitted to Treasury last Friday and there's no additional follow-up required on our part. We should receive a letter with their response from our submission within the next 30 days. Any questions?
No.
We don't know when they expect us to be within the five, you know, above the 5%, like they don't give us a timeline.
They, they just asked us to project our fund balance for this year and the next two school years. So we looked at our savings initiatives that we had, also enrollment and foundation allowance projected increases. With our projections we did, we would be above 5% next fiscal year.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions? And we don't have to vote on this.
No, it's just informational.
Okay, all right. Thank you for all your work, Monica and Crystal. That was exceptionally good news. Motion for the junior high wood shop.
I move the Board of Education to approve a one-time purchase of cabinet, cabinet saw with safety, with a safety fence to equip the Hazel Park Junior High Woodshop classroom in the amount not to exceed $6,000.
Support. Okay. Motion made by Heidi for the wood shop purchase of the saw and second by Monica. Any discussion?
I think again, it's just, this is, the funding source is a career readiness grant, so this is a grant funded purchase that would be made.
Correct. Okay, roll call, please.
Fortress?
Yes.
Ruti?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
LeFrancois?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. Motion carries. Dog, therapy dog handbook. Motion.
I move the Board of Education to approve the changes to the therapy dog handbook for 2024, 2025.
Is there a second?
I'll support.
Okay, motion made by Heidi, supported by April for the therapy dog handbook and Ms. Kales is going to listen.
We have an employee who is requesting to bring their therapy dog in. And while we were going over the requirements and carefully reading through everything that was there, it was identified, there were a few changes that maybe we needed to make in the handbook, so we made those changes, highlighted them in red for you guys so it'd be easy to identify. Really based around, in the handbook itself, it does describe that we would use TDI or another like training source. But then on the, I think it's the opt-out form in the back, it didn't mention the second source that could potentially be used. And then we found out that it said 2324 instead of 2425 on the page as well. So we fixed that, those two things. Those are the only changes.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. In this, it says, I only criticized out the page that, that I was questioning. These are our schools supports the use of therapy dogs for the benefit of its students, subject to the conditions of board policy. We do not have a board policy on, on, on support dogs. I'd like to make one, but we don't have one currently.
Okay, any, any other discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Fortress?
I am a no until we get that policy in place.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
LeFrancois?
No.
Ruti?
Yes.
Uh, no. Motion carries four to three. Board protocols. Motion to accept the operating procedures for the board.
I move the Board of Education to approve the update to the board protocols as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Support. And a motion made by Heidi, second by Debbie, to accept the board operating protocols. Is there any discussion?
I do have one. So when me and Nate did our classes recently, they said that they normally prefer, like when you do public comment, your first public comment is for whatever they want and then your second one is just on your items that you talked about, instead of things being dragged out longer. I didn't know if that was something, it was on our, our Zooms, the other, our trainings.
I think that's up there in this idea.
You know what? I thought about that, didn't realize, because I've heard the same thing.
Yeah, that's what they recommend.
Didn't, can, can, can we vote on this and then amend it next time?
Or? We can, like, make a motion to accept it pending change, pending the amendments. I have a couple too, if we want to run through them.
Okay, well, let's, let's just get those and then we'll, we'll vote on it next time, the whole package. Is that okay? Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I had, there's, the page numbers don't match up, so I'm trying to get the sections. In 1.4, we haven't, 1.4B is all board members may make motions, second motions, and enter into discussion on all agenda items. And then we have C that says the board president may make motions, second motions, and enter into debate on all agenda items. And I'm, I'm wondering if that's repetitive, if we have all board members in B. And then if we want to replace the word debate with discussion, that's kind of an aggressive word and we use discussion all through the rest of the policies. It's the only place that debate appears.
Yeah, I think taking out C, you mean?
Yeah. I, C seems repetitive to B because, or repetitive to B because B says all board members may make motions. So that includes, I don't think we're excluding the president in that.
Right, I agree.
What happened, the reason that that's in there, we can put it under B, is that this previous board could not come to a vote. And so it was stated at that meeting that board presidents can make motions. And so that's why it's written separately because the board, in my tenures, did not know that the president could make a motion till the superintendent said the president can make a motion, and that's true. So that's why. I, I don't care if it says, just so you all know, they advise the president not to make the motion because we're all a team and the president shouldn't be the powerful making all the motions. So they advise the president not to do it, but they say it's okay if we do it.
Right, but then B says all board members.
So we can leave it under all board members. That's fine, as long as you know that there's nothing wrong with the president making motion. So take C out.
And then it wouldn't matter the discussion instead of the debate. Is that would be gone?
And what was the other one?
Well, the other one was just that we use the word debate in, in C where we use discussion and all the rest of them, but if we're, that sort of becomes moot if we're removing it anyway. So those, I mean, that's sort of like two birds, one stone.
Yeah, okay.
4.8, I'm scrolling, sorry. I'm still scrolling. All right, 4.8. In the presented policies, under 4.8 Development and Adoption of the District Budget, we have, we have the budget on the calendar for March. It says spring in here. I'm wondering if we want to further define it and say March, just to sort of remove a little bit of ambiguity there, especially because of the focus that we've had on the budget lately. If we want to like further codify that as the very, to match the calendar. And then also in 4.8 on our, on the presented policies that are in board books, we have C. Board members will not individually undertake to observe the performance, blah, blah, but we then have that again, 4.9A. So I think that may have just been cut and pasted into an incorrect spot because it repeats itself.
Yep, that's correct. I think it is misplaced.
And that's it.
So the, oh, yeah, the C under 4.8, the C needs to move down under 4.9, which it did.
Yeah, it's there. I think it just, it got left. It, that's all. It doesn't need to be in both places.
And, and make the spring, March, is the other suggestion? I kind of like that, so.
It just matches the calendar.
Taking out D?
Yeah, that way we don't contradict ourselves at 4.8D when our calendar specifically says March. I don't know if we need to take it out or if we just want to change it, but it.
And so it's in spring.
You know, in one spot, we tie ourselves to March and then in another spot, we sort of give ourselves some leeway and I don't know that we want to do that.
I think it's good under March.
Okay.
And then I think the other thing is more involved that Monica brought up, or is, if you guys want to write it right now, the voting on the, or the public discussion is on.
Public comment?
Yeah, public comment is the first. Somebody want to do, I can't find it, communication?
It is, um, 1.3.2.
What is it? 1. what?
1.3.2. Page 159, if you're looking at the whole board book.
Oh, person's addressing the board. Uh, person's addressing the board. Each person shall be limited to five minutes at the beginning and three minutes at the end.
So you would have to add another letter?
Yeah, I think that we should wait on that because, I mean, you guys decide if you want to wait on it. Because the first public discussion is supposed to be on agenda items, so we know what people are thinking about. And the second public discussion is regular community public discussion, right?
So we were told that the first is public, whatever they want to talk about. And then at the end was them discussing what we discussed. So if they had questions during the meeting about things that we discussed, that would be the end.
Okay, so let's wait and write that, please.
I would think it'd be the opposite. Sorry, because that way we know the questions they had before we had our discussion.
I have notes, I have notes on it from what we took, from what other boards are doing, where they talked about it. I can, I can look at that and get more clarification. So right now it's stating that we, there isn't a preference, whether it has to be an agenda or not.
Correct.
They just say what they want.
So what's wrong with that?
There's nothing wrong with that. I would just recommend that. That's how.
I mean, I'm just, I mean.
Okay, it's, it's okay. We just table that till the next time. Yes?
So I'm changing my motion.
You want to vote on tabling it?
I make a motion, I amend my motion to table the.
Board protocol?
Board protocols until changes that were discussed remaining.
Did I support that? I don't remember. Yeah, yeah, then I.
Oh, I support it. $50,000.
Okay, motion to table the board protocols until the next meeting. So roll call.
Fortress?
Yes.
LeFrancois?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
No.
Ruti?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. 6-1. ICE guidelines, informational item. Dr. Cost, are you going to speak to that or somebody? Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Dolmage?
That's okay. I think it can be, it's a group conversation as well. So we are coming before the board with these guidelines because, as you know, the current administration has rescinded the protection of what they call safe spaces, such as schools, hospitals, and places of worship. Which means that potentially an ICE agent, if they had the proper warrant, could come into our schools. Now, Ms. Kales and I attended a webinar done by Clark Hill, our attorney firm. And the first thing they said to us was chances are Michigan right now is really not where that's going to be occurring. So while we want to get some guidelines in place, we probably have an opportunity to get some guidelines in place, discuss, learn what's happening in districts across the country and in districts in our own county if that happens, and then continue to make some discussions and decisions around that. Because one of the big pieces is, is because schools have been protected areas, there really isn't a lot of precedence around this. There isn't a lot of case law around this, and that's going to happen as that increases. So in about mid-January, prior to Dr. Krupi's leave, she did give us some high-level guidance. That was from John Garrick because they too were in the, in the really beginning stages of trying to figure out what this looked like and sound like when we're coming into schools. About two weeks after that, Clark Hill did a webinar that Ms. Kales and I attended and I think a couple of our principals did as well. And what they did was, they basically used that same guidance, but added more details. The document that you see in front of you is the document that came from that. Shaking. Okay, okay. Well, I'm going to tell you about the document. Thank you.
You emailed this to us last week.
Do, so you do get a copy of it?
Yeah, I think we just don't have it printed. That's all.
Thank you. So, so that, that document is really a more detailed version of what we would guide our billing principals to do. About a week after that, the ISD also came out with some guidance and I compared those two documents. And quite frankly, they're very similar. You know, essentially, if an ICE agent comes to our school, we would treat that ICE agent like we would treat anyone that's a visitor in our schools, any law enforcement. We would have them follow our visitor management entry piece and have them wait. The big difference is, but we would do this anyways. If, if law enforcement comes into your building and it's not one of our SROs, we would follow protocol, which we, to contact the superintendent. In this case, what the guidance is, is if you, you would contact the superintendent and then they would really be contacting legal counsel. Because one of the things they really tried to highlight was when someone shows up with a warrant, we are not in a place where we would be able to make a decision as to whether it's an administrative or a judicial warrant. And they do not guide us to do that. So the goal here is really to have a short-term set of guidelines. We know there might be questions. We know there might be questions, we know that probably things are going to be changing very frequently, we know there's going to be a lot of things that happen. I'm sure the county is going to come out with some additional things, as well as surrounding school districts. So our hope tonight was just to get this in front of you. We do feel it's important for our administrators to have something in hand, in the event that that happens, that they have some sort of protocol that they can follow until we have a little bit larger discussion. We had had a meeting planned for January 28th, and that meeting got pulled, to start into some of these discussions, to say, short-term, here's what we're going to do, so people have something in their hand, but longer-term, if need be, we can really dig into that more deeply and reflect on what's gone, again, across the country, across the county, as we move some of these things forward. So we really just wanted to bring this forward, just to make sure you had some of this in your hand, and I will be happy to answer any questions that I can, but of course, it's all new, and this is the guidance that we have so far. And as I said, the county really came out with a document that is almost exactly the same. The only difference is, is that what they recommend, which would be consistent with our protocol, is that if law enforcement, really if any law enforcement other than our SROs were in our building, you would put the school into a hold. So again, if there's ICE agents in our building, you'd put your school into a hold, which means, as we know, you see those come home sometimes, that just means students are in their classroom, business as usual. We would just do some things that would make it so kiddos and teachers were not in the hallways. Questions might you have for me?
Can we get a copy of that Oakland Schools guidelines as well? I know we have the, the guidelines from Clark Hill, but if we could have them both, just for reference.
Absolutely.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
No?
Thank you.
Board training, this is our every other month training at Oakland Schools. I need a motion.
I move the Board of Education to approve the board training as presented. Support.
Motion made by Heidi, second by Monica, to, for the board training at Oakland Schools. Any discussion? Roll call?
Fortress?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
LeFrenkles?
Yes.
Yes. The next item is just a FOIA informational piece. Next is grants, informational also. Anybody addressing?
I can run through them just quickly, based on the time, and this is just information, especially since Hazel Park is so blessed to have so many different grants. But there's a 61A1, and it's a Michigan grant, specifically for CTE programs, such as equipment, instructional materials, and program development that we utilize. There's also a 61D, that also is from Michigan and focuses on CTE. But this is to build partnerships with community organizations or businesses. And by strengthening those relationships with employers, it not only helps connect our students to programs that they offer, but also taps into some of the local knowledge that our local employers have. Stronger Together, there are two cohorts, and again, this is centered on fostering community partnerships and addressing student needs through innovative programming. The two cohorts allow twice as many partnerships to be created and twice as many resources to be allocated. Last but not least, there's a national math and science grant, which focuses on teacher instruction and improving that, so that high-quality math and science experiences and engagement skills are happening in our classrooms. And so this really, this grant focuses on how to train our teachers in order to bring STEM opportunities to students. So just a little snapshot of some of the neat resources we're able to get over and above our per pupil FTE.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Next one's informational, target support and improvement.
And that is me as well. So some good news with this is that our junior high school, which was previously identified for targeted support improvement in 2023, has in fact improved, and so they are now off the list. That leaves advantage with being our only TSI school that has been identified, and so we are working with them with interventions and progress monitoring.
Questions? Okay, very good, thank you. And now we have personnel that we moved from the consent agenda.
Yeah, I was, a couple of things. I was confused that we approved Promise Navigator, three positions, two at 40,000, one at 45,000, and now it looks like there's an additional 4,875 being added to the position at the junior high, when we told that, we were told.
We need a motion.
Oh. How do I want to word it? I make a motion to reevaluate the pay for the Promise-O-Navigator position at the junior high. As presented, through a second.
Support. But I'm unsure that that's.
Could you repeat?
I'm not sure that, we have the, we're doing the whole personnel list, right?
Yeah, there's a lot on here outside of the Promise Navigator position.
So.
Like a lot.
Are we just going to work on this and then do the whole personnel?
Well, this was why I was pulling it, because I had a question on it.
Okay.
That's why she didn't know how to make the motion.
Yeah.
I'm thinking too, do you make a motion for the whole list, or I didn't know?
Because we, we approved this position already, and now there's, we didn't approve the 4,875 that's being added to the position.
So what happens if, since you already hold this out, we have discussion on this particular position, and then we'll have to do another motion for the rest of it?
Okay.
I think so. Because we have to approve all those other hirings and retirement.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, we still have to approve that list, so.
So your motion, we're discussing this particular position?
Yes.
Yeah, right now?
Yes.
Just, I just want, everybody looked confused, and I'm just trying to make sure everybody's not confused.
I mean, I was confused too.
Yeah, but we're okay now, we're on the right.
Okay.
So go ahead and discuss.
I have a question, because it's supposed to be Promise Navigator Grant, and this says Community School Expansion Grant.
That's the Ballmer.
That's the Ballmer grant.
Community School Expansion is Ballmer.
We're just calling them Promise Navigators.
Correct.
Can we get clarification with this data?
The grant is called the Community Expansion Grant, it is from Ballmer, yes. The title of the job is Promise Navigator.
First time I heard that. So we need a motion to accept the, to spend the rest of the money?
Well, I'm just questioning, when we approved the $45,000, why is it getting combined into this for $4,875 more than what it was approved for to begin with?
Can anybody answer that? Can you answer that?
Didn't we say at the, when we discussed this at last month's meeting, wasn't it because the junior high had additional students, that's why the junior high position was $5,000 more?
No, was, the 5,000 was for the additional athletics, I was.
So the, if I may, the junior high position was approved for $45,000 because there's additional duties there, more clubs, athletics at the junior high. The portion that is coming from the general fund would be work that this employee would be doing in other parts of athletics, for instance, working at the high school on some of those events.
Say, say that again, the $45,000 was approved.
The $45,000 is grant-funded, the balance is general fund.
For?
For additional duties in athletics. Just athletics.
And that's what this letter says, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just trying to get a clear mind of that.
Was that additional money already approved in prior budget?
This is the salary that the employee is already receiving total. Yeah.
I don't think the additional fund was, the 4,800 was approved.
I think it wasn't approved as part of Promise Navigator, it was approved.
The salary for the employee was improved as a total salary, total comp, when we approved, when we approved the compensation last year.
It, it was not approved. We approved 40,000 Promise Navigator, 5,000 to handle the athletic end of it, and now it pops up with the extra $4,875. We did not approve a $49,000.
So total comp for the employee was improved, was approved when we did our non-union salaries last year for this school year. We have just moved the funding for the position, 45,000 of it, to come from a grant. This is the new grant that it's coming from.
Okay, so what you're saying, just so I'm clear, is that we approved the 49,000 for the position that, we couldn't have approved it for Promise Navigator because we didn't vote on Promise Navigator until now. So for the position that.
For the position and the work that the employee is doing, yes.
From before, from the previous position.
Mm-hmm.
And so we, we're trying to compensate him in the new position, to make the salary the same.
Correct, to keep the salary the same. The job is really, the tasks of the position are very much the same. This employee is still organizing after-school activities, working with athletics, doing much of the same tasks that they were doing in the past, all this time. So we are able to fund $45,000 of this person's compensation from this community expansion grant, and then the balance is just coming from the general fund for other activities, which would, you know, potentially high school athletics.
So what would he be doing for high school athletics?
Assisting at events, just like he has been doing.
High school athletics or junior high athletics?
Both athletics.
Okay.
Athletics as a whole.
Because it doesn't, it just says position.
It just says athletics as a whole.
Or junior high school.
So the position is stationed at the junior high school, yes, and so this person, as described, will be, again, helping with the after-school activities and athletics there. And then outside of that, much as they have been doing all along, is helping with other activities in the athletics department as well.
So, because I'm new to this, and I wasn't here when the first vote for the $49,000 for the athletic position, I, I need to, so in my head, I've heard like two different stories, explanation. The one I just heard, a new one, was for $49,000, that, that was done a while ago as he, that was his athletic job.
It was a activities coordinator, was the name of the position.
Okay, so that was, that was the money for the athletic coordinator.
It was activities coordinator.
Okay, and then now we're lucky because we have this grant.
It was.
He's going to get $45,000 from the grant, and the rest is going to be general fund, and his position now is in addition to the, is a Promise Navigator.
So the position before was also grant-funded, we talked about that too.
Okay.
So this is, this is a different grant, new grant.
Okay.
So it's, it's really, the only thing that's coming from the general fund is the balance between the, the 45 and the 49.
I think the confusion is how it was all worded, and, and last month, we voted on $45,000 for, and I think that's where I'm confused, because I wasn't part of, you know, this year's funding with, with this position. So I think that's where we're confused. And does that make sense? Am I in the?
Nobody gave permission for $4,900 to come from a previous grant, or $4,800.
For his original position?
The activity was 20,000 from out-of-school-time grant and 40,000 from general fund, that's 60,000. It's not 49,000. It was 60,000 before.
The position all along was partially grant-funded before as well, I believe. We can go back and look at the, we can go back and look at the documents from before.
I think we need to do that, because I'm confused where 60 is coming from.
Yeah, I'm confused where the 60 is coming from.
What was the previous position called? Or not, activities coordinator.
Activities coordinator, I believe.
The salary for the activities coordinator was 60,000.
No.
Well, that's what we're going to check. That's what, that's what you were saying, correct? So that's what we want to check on. The position before was 60. 40, I believe, was from a grant, and 20 came up.
No.
Or the opposite, okay, 20 was from a grant and 40 was out of the general fund. So now, this person is moving positions, and so we're, the new position is Promise Navigator. And so we're trying to get his salary close to 50,000.
So the employee's not moving positions. It is the activities that the employee is doing, so just so we're clear, it's title, update.
Yeah, she's.
The title?
It's a, it's an update to the title of the position. It's not.
And there will be additional things that he will be.
That's loose.
We had the job description in our last board meeting.
You know, very much like Brooke does at United Oaks, there will be additional activities that he will be involved in. So it's, it's, and, and I believe the last time we spoke about it, we did talk about, you know, now he's going to be more funded with grant funds, and additionally, his fringe, and the only thing from general is the, above the 45. But there will be after-school weekend activities. I know the Drone Club just got invited to the championship, he's going to be involved in that, that takes weekends. We do a lot with, you know, the resource fair and finding resources for his families at the junior high, and then on top of that, the general fund money will help in the athletic department with high school things. The grant covers anything at the junior high, anything he does for the high school has to be out of general fund. That's, I think.
Would his office be at the junior high?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
So.
So the total salary for this position then becomes 49,875?
His salary hasn't changed. The, the, how we pay for his salary has changed. More is coming out of a grant, less is coming out of general fund. So he is making the exact same amount. The difference is, is 45 of it will be coming out of the expansion grant, as opposed to, you know, the opposite, where less of it came out of a grant. So more of it will be coming out of a grant and less out of general fund.
That isn't how it was explained, and we were given a Nav, Promise Navigator job description for $40,000. There should have been $40,000 out of the grant slash athletic director, communicator, whatever, for the other amount of money coming out of the general fund. It was presented very poorly, in my opinion. It's, it's came before us several times that it was Promise Navigator with this, about community services and doing, it didn't say one thing about athletics, not one thing. And Ms. Fortress asked at the last meeting and was told the 5,000 was for athletics, that's with the extra, there was no more of that 4,800. It's on tape, you can watch with.
I would like to go back and watch that, because I believe that it was 45 for the junior high, and then the extra 5,000 or 40, you know, approximately, was athletics. So 45, so I think where the mix-up is, is we said 45 for the Promise Navigator at the junior high, the additional 4,900 was for the athletics. So I think that's where the, the confusion might become. I, I'm pretty sure, and I'd be happy to go back and look, but I'm pretty sure that was mentioned a few times from Ms. Kales.
Ms. Hinton, I'd like to amend my motion to table this recommendation until we get further information.
I have one more quick question too, before we table it. So are we eliminating the other position? Like it will not be entitled within the status report?
Correct.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
What other information are you asking for so that I can get that for you?
Why didn't you just leave it the same title? Why'd you change it to a navigator? Just call it the activities community person and move them to a different school?
It's community school coordinator, which involves after-school. That's one of the pillars, is after-school extended day learning. So that's, that's what it is. It's a community school coordinator. Because we were trying to tap into Promise Own, we changed the name. So it's just, it's-
It's a coordinator.
It's a, it is a community school coordinator, which involves, involves the four pillars, one of which is extended day and after-school activities.
What would you like to see? It's very confusing.
I'm going to table the decision. I'm going to-
By me? The four pillars are set by Ballmer?
No, the four pillars are national. That's-
Community school model.
Community school model, yep.
So the other two positions at the elementaries are actually community activity coordinators. They're not promi-
They are Promise Own. They are Promise Navigators. They do the, they do wraparound services, collaborative leadership. They do just extended day learning, and then family engagement. So they do the same four pillars, just like at United Oaks, just like the junior high, just like at the two other elementary schools.
So-
The difference between the elementary and the junior high schools is there, there is no athletics at the elementary level.
Kristy asked what we'd like to see. Do you-
Well, I'm just going to go back and review my notes. We have a recommendation from the last board meeting I'm going to review, and I'm going to review, watch the tape and see.
I think we need to review the position, the original position, and then what was said last month. I'm just, I'm really still confused, but we'll get there.
No, that's, that's good. Does everybody have the information when we first did the community activity? You wouldn't. Can you get us the original-
Check.
Job description when this-
Of the activity coordinator?
Yes.
Yeah, the one where it was only partially grant-funded?
Yes. And if it was funded, twenty percent, twenty thousand grant, forty thousand general fund. Because that was on the bottom of it.
Was there an interview process for this position?
No, there was not, because the, because of the job tasks are the same. It's, it's really a title change.
Yeah.
There isn't anything about the position.
Because it's been granted then.
There's no salary change. There's no really any task change, anything like that. This is really a title change for this person who we already have hired and is already earning the salary.
I understand that, but you have to understand what was presented at a new person. At forty-five thousand dollars or forty, forty-nine thousand dollars is confusing, because in my mind, I'm thinking, well, that's what they're going to be receiving as their salary, because there is no mention anywhere that it was sixty thousand minus this, you know, and-
I'm still confused where we're getting sixty from.
Because that's, that's the salary.
But it's not.
It was, it was his salary at the high school.
That was not his salary. President, that is not the salary that this person was earning.
We keep saying that.
The motion is to table this until we can review things.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll support.
All right, a motion to table this until we can review things. Roll call, please. Are you, no more discussion. Roll call.
What is the impact on current work, then, if we table this? Do these positions not exist until-
I don't think it impacts anything. I think it is, continues the way it has been. I mean-
We just have to clear up the money.
Yeah.
So, so continuing the way it has been, keeping the same salary for this employee?
No, whatever is happening.
He was approved at-
We're not changing, we're not changing anything about the position.
We're changing the funding.
Right. And so we have a higher level of grant funding than we had previously. So we're, we're pulling less money from the general fund than we were in the past. Significantly less.
But why is it in the personnel, like he's a new hire, or a transfer?
It is a transfer, in the personnel, I believe. Because it's, it's a title change transfer. That's how, that's how the personnel recommendations list have been done for some-
It doesn't, whatever. I'm good.
We approved the position for forty-five thousand.
Whatever. I, I, I wasn't part of it last year, so I can't, I'm just going to-
This was last month.
We were told it was a transfer, and we approved the position for forty-five thousand.
So we need the job description of the first job at the high school, and now the job description of the Promise Navigator, because they're very different. And then athletics was tagged on to the Promise Navigator. The Promise Navigator is like a community rep that gets services for families, food for families, coats for children. It's a, it's not academic, it's not sports, it's let's help our families kind of thing. The coordinator activity thing was about junior Vikings. It was about working basketball games. It was about working weekends for sports. They're two different job descriptions with two different titles, but they're doing the same job. So please, can we just vote and we can come back to this? He can keep working. Nobody's saying that the person can't work.
Are we, just so, I'm, can I ask a clarifying question? Is it, it's about the forty-eight or the forty-nine seventy-five? Is that what this is all about?
Well, we approved the position for forty-five thousand.
Yes, so it's about the forty-
They're not happy that he's still going to do things for the high school.
No, I don't care what he does, but we approve the position for forty-five thousand. If you're going to change it, then we need to vote on the job.
If it was-
So I heard you say he can still do what he's doing right now.
All right, so we need to vote on the motion to table.
Dr. Kost is speaking.
No, April was going where I was going. So vote on the motion to table.
Yeah.
He stays put where he is right now, and we'll sort out the paper trail.
That's what we're voting on, right, is the motion to table?
We're going to table it until-
Okay, because I'm, I just want to make sure that I know what we're voting on, because it, that got weird. Do we have, did we have support for Heidi's motion?
I'll support.
Yes.
I make, I make a motion to amend my motion to approve the personnel-
Wait, we didn't have-
Wait, we have to vote on the, the table.
With moving-
Oh, you're changing, okay.
I'm doing them both in one.
I'm sorry.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
I make a motion to approve.
I don't believe we can, because we are-
We can't.
Okay.
On the table to-
Okay. Then go ahead. I make a motion to table it. Go.
A second?
Second.
To table it?
I'll second it.
All right, motion on the table to second. Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
The Brown Boys?
Yes.
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinta?
Yes.
Riti?
abstain.
Okay. Motion carries. Personnel, motion to accept personnel report?
I make a motion to approve the personnel report as written.
Second, anybody?
I'll second. With just the one question, could we have the memo and the resume of the prior resolution, only because that wasn't included in the packet, because we were closed?
Of what? I'm sorry.
Just to include the-
Resolution for the paraprofessional?
Just to include the resume of the paraprofessional that we discussed in the prior resolution.
Oh, you want that to be included?
Yeah, we can approve it without it, but when we have the packet next time, we'll get the resume like we did last time.
Yes. Person?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to accept the personnel report by Heidi's second it by April. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Fortress?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinta?
Yes.
The Brown Boys?
Yes.
Riti?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
President, can I?
This is on break.
What?
In the beginning of the meeting, there was a question, and it was very hard to hear, because we had a lot of people here, that Ms. Beaton brought up, and I couldn't hear. What was, something with the language?
At the beginning of the meeting?
Yeah.
That was seven years ago, Heidi.
I know, but I couldn't hear, because it was so loud.
It was the language pilot.
And we, and we-
Oh, the language line pilot.
And we talked about it at the committee of the whole.
Correct.
And it wasn't on the agenda?
It did not make it to the agenda. The, there was a recommendation to not include it.
Was that made at the committee of the whole meeting?
It was not.
No. Then I make a motion to bring the language-
To bring it back to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. I'll support.
Okay, a motion was made to bring the language line pilot to discussion, second by April. Discussion?
I mean, I made my discussion. I, I think that it's necessary and only helps our parents and is inclusive to the families that are in the district. So I, I mean, I just echo my statements from earlier, if we're making discussion.
I agree with that.
At the committee as a whole meeting, that was important.
Did you have anything to add to it, Stephanie?
No, I just thought I'd come up and ask your any questions.
I think we're all done with this meeting tonight.
Some questions coming, maybe.
I just, I think we talked about it at the committee, the whole, there was no objections to it being brought forward. I'm not quite sure why it wasn't. I believe we even had discussion that it was in our current budget, and it was a small amount, and if it can benefit people and the students in the committees, I would see why it wouldn't be on the agenda.
It was explained it was left off due to the cost, just to wait until we see finances, but that's fine. We can vote on it and discuss it.
I don't believe it is in the current budget, which is where my hesitation was. But I think it was for up to six thousand dollars, and we were going to pilot it, and I'm comfortable moving forward.
Okay.
Or just a modification that we had discussed, Dr. Kost and I discussed, if we're not comfortable with the six, that perhaps we shorten the pilot and run it during the summer months, because that's when there's a lot of enrollment going on, and we often have families. So if we pilot it, and the pilot would be to pilot, see how it is, and then consider if that's something that we would like to move forward on in the future, of course. And so we thought that if we chopped it down to three months, that we could really say, let's try to keep it within that three thousand dollars, monitoring it very carefully to see what the cost would be. With the, while we have a number of students that are EL students in our district, the vast majority of them are INVEST, and most of the INVEST staff is buyer, tri-label.
Yeah.
So they don't seem to have, they don't really have those needs as much. The other portion of the district, it's probably, you know, we probably have ninety students, so the number of families who are really going to need that is probably going to be pretty low. But I know that our enrollment office often talks about the difficulties, and we have to grab a staff member here or there. And if we were to use an interpretation service, you know, a in-person interpretation service, it would be significantly more, which we use. We use those for IPs and discipline meetings, when it's a really critical nature to have somebody who can really fully interpret. So I'm comfortable with the six, if the board wants to go with that, and then we can get that started next month. Or if the board prefers to adjust it a little bit as we're navigating some of these budget pieces, that would be fine as well.
So it's basically a thousand dollars a month?
Say that again?
It's basically a thousand dollars a month.
Yes. That was our target, about a thousand dollars a month, and month. And what it would be is really closely monitored, because the suggestion was, is that we would have the enrollment office use it specifically, but maybe one or two, maybe a secondary secretary in the building, you know, a couple of people to try it out, see how it worked, because it's on-demand. Literally, they can, you know, a person could walk in here, need the translation services, they will give you cards to sit on your desk, that would, individual could indicate that they needed a specific language. They literally could call up, it's twenty-four seven, and they could get somebody to do that interpretation. It could also be done during, through video as well.
I'd like to see that during enrollment, for sure, so.
And it is not, I mean, the six thousand average is two thousand dollars a month. The, the cost is sixty-four cents per minute for Spanish and sixty cents per minute for other languages. So, I mean, it could end up being zero dollars if no one utilizes the service, but to have it available. So we only pay for what we use, essentially.
Correct. And actually, this was already, which I didn't know when I went into this, about five years ago, someone actually opened up an account. We were going to launch into it. It never got triggered. So we actually have an account with them already. We've just never used the service before.
Madam President, would it be permissible to maybe have, Ms. Beaton, to maybe make the motion, so we can go ahead with this?
I already made the motion.
Heidi made it.
Oh, well.
It's late, Darren. I feel you.
Can we just move forward and vote on this thing?
Yes.
So are we voting for six months or for three months?
Heidi, just make the motions for a hundred months.
I did it for the six, not to see six thousand.
Okay.
And it's on a per day basis, so.
All right, motion made for six months of the language line pilot, seconded by April, correct? All in favor?
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Will Brown Boys?
Yes.
Riti?
Yes.
Hinta?
Yes, motion carries. Superintendent report enrollment.
So this is a snapshot of our enrollment. We had Fourth Wednesday, I believe it was February twelfth. The following week was spring break. We have twenty days to count students, and so we're, we're cleaning that up, but I wanted you to have that at your fingertips as of right now. So when, when this is all finalized, we'll give you comparisons of where our fall count was, where this count is, and then how that impacts our blended count.
Yeah, this is nice. Thank you.
I'll move on to the next item fundraisers. There is one. It is in your packet. I believe it's for men's basketball program.
Okay. Request for future agenda items.
I'd like to make the request that we look at making, sorry, making a policy for the support animals, and making a policy for the fund balance, and making a policy for social media. Those were all policies that we used to have, and they're no longer with us.
What was fundraiser, social?
Social.
Fund balance, social media.
Emotional pets.
Support animals.
Support animals.
Okay. We need to get a policy ad hoc committee.
I'd like to add to that policy discussion, artificial intelligence.
What was that?
AI.
AI.
Oh, AI?
Yeah.
Policy.
It's a good one.
All right, we'll talk about, we need to get an ad hoc committee, because it's going to take some time then to sit here at a business meeting.
Well, can we get maybe a draft?
You can help me, guide, guide me on how to do that. Okay, we're at practice.
I have a request for a future agenda item for our next, whether it be a committee meeting or our next business meeting, I don't have a preference for which. But if we could invite Mr. Gardner from Truen to update the board on our current relationship, or if we invite a representative from the investigation law firm. It was brought up a couple times in public comment today. It's obvious that the public has questions. It, for one, struck me as stressful, that there were a lot of questions that were laid out in public comment, and I don't even know the answers to those questions. So I can certainly see the distress and the concern of the public if their members of this board also don't have the answers to those. I would like for them to come in. It's been almost a month. It also concerns me that in our informational FOIA request, it says that we do not have a written contract with the investigation firm. So I would like to explore whether or not that's accurate. So, I would like to explore whether or not that's accurate or not. If we're paying the money, I would like to have a written contract.
We have a.
I don't know if our resolution takes care of that, but.
It was in the resolution, and all of your names are on it to hire the Allen Law Group.
To hire them, but I, if we don't have a written contract with them, that concerns me. Just using really rough calculations based on two law firms, two staff people, since making, since placing the superintendent on paid administrative leave in late January, by the close of February, we will have spent tens of thousands of dollars on this, and we have not received an update since January 27th. So, if we can invite one and/or both of those law firms to come to our next meeting and provide an update to the board, I would appreciate that.
Okay, anybody else?
Can we add an accounting of what we've spent so far to your ask?
We could. I don't know if that would be redundant to the financial statements because I guess it would be in there, but I certainly wouldn't oppose adding an accounting.
And, you know, the interim superintendent's contract is right there online for everyone to see. They know how much he's getting, so, I mean, they can add it up. It's not like it's being hidden.
What did you, what did you request?
Accounting.
An invoice.
Yeah, I asked if we could have an accounting of what we've spent so far.
Yep.
Because if you start using, you know, thousands and tens of thousands, millions of dollars, it kind of gets kind of exaggerated. We need to know the exact number. It's not fair to people to have this not knowing.
Any other agenda items?
We're speaking agenda items. Can we get a presentation in the near future, a couple of months, about our health clinic? I haven't heard much about it over at the high school. How many are we servicing? Are they, are they still in play there? Are they?
The health clinic, is that what you said?
At the high school, behind the school.
The health clinic, yes.
I don't know if they're St. John's anymore or Corwell. I mean, they've changed names.
I don't even know if they're there. How people know we even have them?
And also sometime, I'd like to see a demonstration of Power School to see how a parent, even though, you know, parents are here, but there are some people that aren't a parent, and I would like to see how a person registers their student when they do it from home and they want to bring their kid to our district. I want to see how they, you know, where their, how the parents can see the grades, the lunches, the, all that stuff. It would be kind of interesting to see a demonstration, plus for the people at home too that don't have.
Lunches are on our district page on the menus.
No, no, I mean, lunches like before, you were able to see the kid, what they ate, the lunches that they ate because they would work with the Thai system. So, you would go on as a parent, you'd see they had a milk, they had this, they had that, and I.
I don't think they do that.
Okay. That's what I'm curious about.
I'm not curious what my kid eat for lunch.
Yeah, I'm just curious about it, and I'm just curious of how easy the system is to register your student. I mean, you're sitting out, you know, going to type in stuff, you have to mail stuff in? Do you have to, I mean, it just, you know, and it can be done in June, July. I don't really care, but just the interest. We spend all this, thousands of dollars on a new system. I'd like to see it in the works. And the other question was, did we find a room for the athletic boosters equipment?
That has not been completed yet.
Okay, thanks. Just curious. Just follow up.
Is that it? All right, back to public discussion. I have Eric Confer.
My name is Eric. I live at 117 West Annabelle Avenue. So, what I kind of wanted to just briefly touch on again is when I was brought in as a paid employee to coach these wrestlers this year, I was told a, that I was going to be paid a specific amount, and I didn't get my paperwork until like halfway through the season, and that paperwork said that I was going to get about half of what I was told at the beginning of the season. So, was pretty much like lied to of what I was going to receive for coaching these kids. And I should have just left halfway through the season, just kissed the paycheck goodbye. But that wouldn't show these kids what it's like to be a man of your word and stick to it, and that's what we're here to do as coaches, is to encourage these kids to stick to their decisions and follow them through no matter what. And as a coach, that's what I really believe in, and if I would have just did that, I wouldn't have given my kids any faith in being able to just be a good example for them. So, like, I think that definitely needs to be changed.
Thank you. Don McGinnis.
Don McGinnis, 1337 East Granite. I came up here to speak about a couple things, mainly by not, not being heard in the school all the way up through management. I asked for a lot of things, of course, you know, for wrestling and all that, and I don't get answers back. And then I get emails as well saying that I had to have it done within an hour, and, no follow-ups on anything. And on top of that, you know, I still want to follow up on the junior high wrestling coach. I haven't heard nothing back about that, about the applications. I never got an interview for that as well, and I don't know why. I have had many meetings about a lot of this stuff, and I just feel like it's, you're pushing families out, and, you know, I am, I'm at the last straw here. So, like I said, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Board member, Ms. Anybody have something?
I have, oh, kind of.
Go ahead.
I have some, I went to the government relations meeting, closed Zoom, so I didn't go there, but, and I just wanted to briefly, they encouraged us to watch the State of the State, which is February 26th. They said, please be vigilant in your budgeting because with the federal government making their cuts, no one's sure what's happening. They're, one of the cuts they're anticipating is it's going to make it harder to get free lunch. The guidelines for that are changing. I don't know if that's going to affect us or not, but that's one of the things. The Medicare cuts, Medicare, Medicaid, I made, Medicaid, thank you, I get those two confused all the time, might have adverse effects on the school district, and also the Title I funds could be cut up to 25%. That was pretty amazing to me. And there, I just talk about some good news, talk about expanding free preschool to three-year-olds because right now I think it's only to four-year-olds. And another word of warning is to please watch best practices because long-term issues because those change all the time, and sometimes they're not really best practices. I want to thank everybody that spoke. It's very difficult to get up there. I've been on that side before. It's difficult on this side too, but, and I'm really excited for James and the Giant Peach. I've been waiting for a movie I could take on my grandkids to, or play. I think that's it.
All right, thanks. You want to do your fabulous night last night?
I do. I'm going to do a couple of things first. I want to congratulate all the teachers of the year. I mean, our teachers are all amazing, but to see so many nominations and some of them coming from staff, parents, everything, it's phenomenal to see. So, congratulations to them. Huge congratulations to Chloe, Mrs. Hazen. I am amazed that a fifth grader has such a heart that wants her class to learn sign language for her mother. I wish that we had sign language as a normal class anyways, but I think, I mean, I can't even commend that girl enough at, what, she's probably nine, 10? That is amazing. So, kudos to her and kudos, Ms. Hazen, for following up and not giving up on her and learning with them. I think that's awesome. For the promise on dinner yesterday, most of our board members came. Some of you won some baskets. It was definitely a smaller event this year, which I'm sure we all know why with the negativity of the district, but this shouldn't affect our kids. So, right now, in both sides of this, it's extremely important to stay supportive. The promise on definitely helps our students with many opportunities to and through post-secondary and beyond. And I want to have a huge shout out to Jardine Tidy Coons because she donated like 10 baskets to me. She couldn't be there that night, so she donated tremendously, and I just, I can't thank her enough. Last night's dinner was a little more formal, I felt like, because it wasn't as crowded, and I just appreciate all of you guys for coming, and anyone from the audience that did come. It was great, so I appreciate you guys. That's all I got.
Anybody else?
Yeah, if I could just for a minute. There are two things coming up, well, several things coming up. James and the Giant Peach has already been mentioned. On March 4th, the Jardine Crusaders are going to be playing a basketball game at Hazel Park High School. It will be free admission, and it would be great, be great if as many people as possible could come out and support that team. I found out today that they are undefeated. This will be a really great opportunity for them to play directly at the high school and a great opportunity for the community to show up and support them. Also, sports for the second year in a row. Hazel Park High School has a wrestler that is completing, competing in individual state matches coming up. I think they've already started. Two? Oh, Kendra, two, right? Okay, two. I think they might have already started. Did they start today? Okay. Coming up this weekend, so good luck to both of them. That'll be the second year in a row that that happens. That's exciting. All of the teachers that head student of, or teacher of the year, we've been here for hours. Without them, none of us would be here, and none of our students would be here. They are obviously the backbone of the district. And then just to echo some of Debbie's statements, we had a lot of advocacy and a lot of people that came to speak in this room today, and I would encourage you to pack that up, and when you leave this room, don't stop. Take that to the county, take that to the state, take that to your senators and your representatives at the federal level because both public education and supportive services that take place in our schools are absolutely in jeopardy right now, and that is happening on the backs of our students. If you feel strongly about public education, if you feel strongly about our students having access to a free and appropriate education, leave here, email, call, keep that energy up, and make sure that you're advocating elsewhere as well.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
I just want to echo what everyone else said about, you know, people getting up and speaking. I really appreciate that. We hear it, and we absolutely hear it. There's a lot of tough times right now. So, keep speaking, please. Students of the Month, that was awesome. That was fun. And Teachers of the Year. It's great to see all this staff and the teachers and getting the accolades that they deserve, so, thank you. Thank you for being here.
Diddle, diddle, diddle. Doctor, do you want to be the afternoon? Dave's setup, or do you want?
Dr. Cost. So, just a quick update. There was some concern about lights at Webb, and Greg Richardson was on it right away, and it is, it is in the process of being resolved, but all students are safe. A happy thing is next week is Social Worker Week. So, those people are the glue that keep our schools together, and it'll be nice to just let them have their own week next week. And today is School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. So, lots of appreciation, special, special things going on. So, I wanted to mention, we lost a principal that was a fantastic person, Mr. Don Vogt, and I took some of the comments from Facebook, from his staff and from his students, because who could say it better than, than those people? I worked for Don for 10 years, but it, this is some of the things they said. Don was such a genuinely kind, encouraging soul who had a wonderful way with words, always had a smile and time to chat. He was a principal by day, basketball coach after school and on weekends. Don was a dad to all who taught at Hazel Park High School. Students described him as the best. He was an amazing mentor. He made sure we stayed on track. He was always walking the halls with his school radio, and he was, he was always walking the halls. He attended every drama club production, and some students would play spot Don to see where he was in the audience. One of the best principals that my kids ever had. Every interaction, good or bad, always ended pleasant. Hazel Park was lucky to have him. And that is true, and I love that quote from that parent, "good or bad," because that is what happens, but she always felt that in the end, it was always a pleasant experience. So, yeah, Don was a, he was, he was a great guy, and he did smile a lot, and he could sing, and he could dance, and he could give a eulogy because he also had a degree as a minister. So, and then I had the school bus appreciation thing. I have, I've made a binder for each board member. I have the vision and the mission statement on the front. I was looking for some information for Dr. Croupy, and I came across this 2004 Hazel Park newsletter, and it's the history of our schools and when they were, when they were built. So, I thought the information was good. We have at our service, we have a free attorney at the Michigan School Board Association, Brad Bonasik. And so, I have, I copied all the questions people have asked him about school law because I keep all the magazines, so there's a lot of stuff in here. I told him one time, you need to write a book, School Board for Dummies, because there is so much, the learning never ends. So, and I have Brad's things. I have the Board of Education goals in here, what our goals have been, some different laws, how to call the question if the discussion's too long. I have the board committee appointments in here, and you got a copy tonight. Jamie was kind enough, she put a job description of those committees. And your state legislators, your governor to write letters or phone calls, us, if you want to send each other a birthday card or a Christmas card or something, we're in there. And this is about interviews, how to handle interviews, how a committee should sit on the board, and I have our bylaws in here. So, I have one of those for each person. We get this leader book several times a year. I have one for Nate because these came out last year, and when I went to the conference in October, November, I grabbed these for the new people, April and Darren. We just got one that has a fantastic article in it about the budget. It's like this was written for us. It's a wonderful article, so check out your leaderboard and check out the budget article. Oh, jeez, that's a page. Oh, that's my page. Because I was going to read the committee assignments. So, that's it. Anybody have anything else? If not, we can adjourn.
We should adjourn. Second.